Uh, the meeting. Pull the meeting to order. Um. Steve, uh, you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Ms. Tabachnik?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
And Mr. Schuman?
Here.
Okay, have a forum.
Okay, uh, and, uh, for, uh, uh, the entire meeting, uh, will be seating, um, Hannah Tabachnik. Um. First, uh, item of business, uh, under preliminary review and action on applications is 2024-29. Uh, this is an 824, uh, referral. It's Department of Public Works. Conveyance of a plus or minus seventy-two square foot temporary construction easement for the purposes of installing a temporary guy anchor in Veterans Park. And, um, we'll, um, ask, um, uh, Vanessa to just explain to us, uh, what that is and why it is, and, um, uh, then we can, um, take action.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Vanessa Valadari, Chief of Operations and Public Works. So, uh, what we are presenting tonight is just an 824 for a very little, uh, construction easement that the Walk Bridge is requiring under Veterans Park. They need to, uh, really relocate one of the poles and the guide rail of that pole ended up being into Veterans Park. Um, so as you can see, it's a very small area. It's only seventy-two square feet. Um, thanks, Steve, for sharing. Um, so it will be right there at that little corner. Um, but, uh, the good thing about it is that we were able to negotiate a little bit of money on behalf of the city, um, because it is very consistent with all the right-of-way that, uh, the group has been taking from us. So, uh, we went actually, they had a, another offer before that was much lower that we s- we thought that wouldn't be fair, and now we came back with only, it's twenty-five hundred dollars. And, um, this should be there for approximately a few years. That's why it's temporary. And as soon as, um, that pole can be relocated again, uh, that will be removed.
Uh, any questions? And if there are no questions, um, uh, again, as Steve has suggested, I'd ask for a motion uh, of approval, uh, indicating that this meets with, um, the, uh, city's, uh, citywide plan.
So moved.
Okay, uh, Mr. Rowena has moved and Mr. Williams has seconded. Um, Tammy, do you have a question or were you trying to second? Oh, okay.
No questions.
Let's just do this with a show of hands. Uh, if there are no questions, all those in favor.
Aye, I'm sorry, something's wrong with my video.
Okay.
Trying to fix it.
But that's fine. Thank you, Anna. Uh, are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Uh, it passes.
Thank you so much.
Have a nice evening. Okay, uh, uh, item number, uh, two, uh, site plan review, 2024-18 SPR/MV TMC Properties, uh, Limited LLC, 599 West Avenue and 5 Merwin Street. Um. That is District One, Block Twenty-four, Lot One and One B. Change in ownership for motor vehicle license. Um. Is there someone here representing the, uh, owner?
Just give us one second, Mr. Chairman. We have to pull folks over from the applicant's team, from attendees to participants. It just might take a minute.
That's fine.
And if you'd like to raise your hand if you're a part of that group, um, that would help us out as well.
Yeah, and just to note, members of the public who wish to speak on this, your opportunity will come after the applicant presents.
Uh, Steve, while we're waiting for you to pull them over, um, this is not a public hearing, but you may comment about, uh, public speaking.
Oh, it is a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, just a correction.
Um.
Not for this one. For, this one's just a site plan review.
Oh, okay, my mistake. Sorry about that.
Okay.
I think that should be everybody. Um, Attorney Sachi, if I'm incorrect, if a member is missing, please let me know.
But again, that's for the next one, is it not? Here, we're just dealing with, um, uh, motor vehicle licensing.
Correct.
Change of ownership.
Yes, sorry, I was jumping ahead in application.
That's okay.
Those who would be attending, um, would be myself, Mr. Curry, Mr. Trudeau, um, Dean Martin and Matthew Pop, and perhaps, um, Attorney Gary LaRusso. I think those are the only individuals from our side that you may or may not hear from tonight. I think they're all on. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, I'm Liz Sachi, I'm partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandak and Hennessy, 1055 Washington Boulevard in Stamford. We represent the applicant, which is Curry's Tires Cars and Towing, along with the owner, TMC Properties Limited LLC. Uh, this is in a site plan review application and motor vehicle to change the ownership of this business from, um, Curry's Tires for Less to Curry's Tires Cars and Towing LLC. As part of that process, a new application to the State of Connecticut Department of Motor Vehicles would be required, and that requires approval and signature on the application by the local zoning authority. So hence, we are before you for this application. The properties are located at 599 West Avenue and 5 Merwin Street. They're bounded by Merwin to the south, West Avenue to the west, residentially developed property to the east, and a commercial property to the southwest, another automobile, uh, dealer, uh, repair shop. It's District One, Block Twenty-four, Lots One and One B. At the time of filing, which was February fourteenth, the property was owned central business, and that is the, uh, zoning classification regulations that apply to this application. The application, as I said, was submitted on or about February fifteenth. Notifications to neighbors, as is required, was mailed by certificate of mailing on February twenty-second, and that certificate was returned to the zoning department and should be in the file. Uh, the existing conditions, if this is a thirty-three thousand square foot lot or lots combined, there are two structures. The site front, one-story structure, it's about twenty-seven hundred square feet, commercial nature, built in the mid eighteen-sixties. The site rear structure is about two stories, uh, thirty-two hundred square feet, been used for warehouse and retail, and that was built in the early eighteen-forties. There is legally non-conforming parking, which will remain in the front and along the sides. And basically, uh, the proposal is to allow Curry's Tires Cars and Towing to operate in the same manner in which Curry's Tires for Less has operated for nearly a hundred years. The uses would be, um, new and used tire sales and installation alignments, auto change, excuse me, oil changes, brakes, uh, suspension work, auto sales, and this applicant would like to seek, um, inclusion on the city's tow list. There would be no change in the number of employees, no change in the hours of operation. That's generally Monday through Saturday, seven to five, ten employees, and that would continue. I believe all CX sign-offs have been received, and those include Fire First District, Water, WPCA, DPW, and TMP. The only issue that was seemed to be outstanding was my client's desire to reinstall the curb cut on Merwin Street. That had been a curb cut that existed for many, many years, up until as late as twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. And it's, um, beneficial for my client to have that curb cut reinstalled. We did approach DPW for permission to seek the curb cut permit. Initially, there was an indication it was going to be approved, but then further review by planning, zoning, and TMP in discussions with DPW. DPW did not issue the permit. However, we believe it's, um, important for us. It only impacts two on-street parking spaces, had been in existence for many, many years, and, uh, that side of the street does not have the amount of parking need generated that you might think. It's, it's rather vacant most of the day. So with that, that's the general overview of the proposal. If you would be kind enough, I'd like Dean Martin to just walk you through the site plan, then Matt Pop to show you the landscape plan, show you where some additional landscaping is proposed at the request of staff. And if you have any questions for myself, Mr. Trudeau, or Mr. Curry, we'd be happy to answer them. So, Mr. Martin?
Yes, good evening. Uh, Dean Martin with Grumman Engineering. Um, let me see if I can pull up the, um, site plan. Okay. All right, so this is the, uh, let me pull this up a little bit if I can. Property on, um, this is the 599 West Avenue parcel. Uh, down to the bottom of the screen is 5 Merwin Street. Um, not a lot is going on with this property. As stated by Attorney Sachi, uh, there are two existing buildings, one here in the center of the property, one towards the eastern or northeastern corner of the parcel. Uh, there are two, uh, curb cuts off from West Avenue with service to the parcel. Uh, one here, which is approximately sixty feet wide. Um, and then further to the north, starting at this point and going to the north, second curb cut, which actually goes on to the adjacent property to the north. Um. It's a fairly level parcel. Um. Entirely paved, except for the, uh, southeast corner over here, which is, uh, a gravel-ish type pavement. It's, uh, impervious surface, but it's not, not hard, uh, hardcover. Uh, the only thing that we're actually doing here, as far as improvements, are relocating or locating a permanent, uh, trash enclosure at this location right here. Um, and then also, uh, we'll be installing a fenced-in area at the southwest corner, southeast corner of the 599 parcel. Um. Then, uh, there are existing, or currently two existing catch space and dry wells, which are these blue dots, which, uh, pick up runoff, uh, within the paved area. Um, those are totally, uh, enclosed within the site, not connected to the city, uh, utilities, or city infrastructure. Um, as stated, uh, the proposed curb cut off from 5 Merwin Street would be located here. Uh, again, that would impact two of the, uh, existing metered parking spaces. Uh, no other work is proposed on either of the parcels. Um, and that was already discussed about the, uh, uh, DPW and the curb cut, uh, that approval that we were seeking. Um, that's essentially what's happening. Thank you.
Anyone have any comments, uh, questions, or, um, anything for Mr. Martin? Okay.
I do.
Go ahead. Excuse me.
Um, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if this is for Attorney Sachi, um, or Mr. Martin. In kind of driving around the area, I mistakenly originally thought that your two parcels, uh, were the European Auto Repair Shop and your existing shop. And, and then I re-looked at it, and because I was curious about the curb cut, because the, I believe it's called the European Auto, has a big curb cut on Merwin Street, but it's kind of chained off, like they don't want anybody driving in and out of there. And I'm curious why you want the curb cut, because it looks like you just have that space now sort of filled with perhaps old automobiles or using it as storage. So if you get the curb cut, what do you plan to do with all the stuff that's sitting in that space now?
The, the material that's there will obviously have to be removed. Um. It's just some old, you know, equipment, I believe, that's, that's left there. Um, the owner will have to remove that and get it to a different location.
Okay, and would?
Just, if I may interject, I, it would be, it would provide some ease of access in and out of the street, coming into West Avenue, right? Rather than having customers and others having, have to circumnavigate around the existing buildings in between the two buildings, in the rear of the one that fronts on West Avenue, this would allow a customer to come in, they could park, and they could exit right through, uh, the west, the Merwin Street parcel. It, it would provide another means of egress. And then that parcel would be, could be cleaned up. There could be some additional parking there. And if there are conditions that the commission deems necessary and appropriate to best shield that, we had, we had developed a plan with a curb cut that showed some landscaping along Merwin Street. But it really, it provides another means of egress for customers to get in and out.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm all in favor of that and any additional landscaping. Um. Because the, uh, big apartment building there, they didn't even put any windows on the end that faces the little spur that you want onto Merwin Street. And I don't know why that was, but it looks sort of odd. They have recessed brick in what looks like might be windows, but there are no windows, and maybe they just didn't want to look out over that view. Um, but I understand the circulation problem and not wanting to pull out onto West Avenue and make, uh, left, because then you're crossing the traffic that's going north, which is perhaps a bit of a challenge at times.
That's correct. This would bring motorists coming out onto Merwin. They may come out to Merwin, make a right or westbound, and they'd come to a signalized intersection. They could go left or right, north or south.
Right, okay, thank you.
Well, since this issue has come up now, um, I, I have a couple of questions. The first is why, uh, the original curb cut on Merwin, uh, was closed? And, uh, number two, I'd, I'd like to hear from TMP as to why they're refusing uh, the request, uh, to open it. I mean, it, it, it seems to me frankly, um, that, uh, to, uh, o- overrule, uh, TMP, um, takes, um, an awfully, um, um, a strong and compelling, uh, argument, uh, since most often their, their concerns have to do with, um, issues like safety. Um, so I, I'd like to get answers to those questions. Some may have to come, uh, Attorney Sachi from your team, and, um, uh, I saw that, um, uh, we did have Mr. Travers with us. I'd like to hear from him as well.
I can answer part of that. Uh, as I mentioned before, the curb cut existed till about two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and then it was closed. We didn't close it. I believe that the city installed curbing and closed it for us. So, uh, it wasn't something that we sought, and wasn't something, at least my understanding, that the Curry family, uh, implemented on their own. Uh, not to speak for TMP, but I believe their comments related to the curb cut elimination as being able to provide two more on-street parking spaces, and that was believed to be a benefit in that neighborhood. Hence, the reason why there was, um, an objection to reinstall, installing the curb cut.
Thank you.
I had a, uh, follow-up. Oh, sorry, JJ, I saw your hand went up.
I, I actually had a question just in regards to the parking. It's funny that you mentioned that. It's like you're reading my mind. And, uh, uh, of course, Jim Travis is here, so I'm thinking maybe the reason why there was a conflict was because it's a loss of revenue, because those are two paid parking spots that they would lose. So would it be reinstated somewhere else along that block?
There are parking spaces, paid parking spaces from this parcel boundary on Merwin Street, all the way down Merwin Street, a good portion of it, if not to almost the end. I, I don't believe they, the paid parking spaces go all the way to Harbor, but there are paid parking spaces all along that side of the street.
Yeah, there are.
Times that I've been on that street, if three or four are used, and I've driven, driven down the street on different occasions, um, that is, seems to be the, the most amount of parking used on that street at any given time.
But at dinnertime, those parts are taken. Yeah, dinnertime. Yeah, the, the restaurants inside the plaza.
There's also public parking inside Waypoint.
That's true. Okay, so, um, my second question was in regards to, um, is there another line of business that will go with the tire repair? Did you say towing?
There is a request, uh, there will be a request, uh, by, and it's part of this application as well, for Currys to be placed on the city's tow list. There is also a separate process in order for that to occur, but they would like to be able to have that opportunity and be one of the, um, companies that are called when the police department needs a tow, needs to have a vehicle towed. And part of that vehicle storage area in the back that would be, um, fully fenced in would be to store some of those, uh, vehicles also behind the building, so that they're screened from view along West Avenue.
Okay, but, um, will the, will auto body also be taking place on this property?
Um, strict auto body, uh, you know, I, I have to defer to Mr. Curry. I was not aware of auto body repair, but maybe Tim could just clarify if I was, if I misspoke. Or Mr. Trudeau, if you could come on. Well, they were on. I don't know what happened.
All right, while we wait for that answer, uh, I'd like to hear from Jim Travers, um, regarding those parking spaces.
There's actually no auto body work, if you can hear me now. Sorry, I had to figure out how to unmute.
Thank you, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
No auto body. Can I be heard now?
Yes.
We already have the answer.
Okay, good. Yeah, it took a little while to figure out how to unmute it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, did you want to hear from me?
Yes, please, Jim.
Hi, hi, sir. Thank you. Um, uh, while I wasn't prepared for this one, you know, I, I can certainly, I can certainly speak to it. Um, so the, the concerns coming from TMP were, uh, you know, the twofold. One, uh, the loss of two revenue generating parking spaces, uh, not only that the fact that they're revenue generating parking spaces, but they're parking spaces that are actually designed, uh, and created to enhance economic development in the area, uh, to create turnover in spaces. You know, we could, uh, the, from the economic development perspective, we continue to be challenged to, uh, to fill, uh, the, 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 uh, the empty retail, uh, that's at this slot. Um, but, uh, to, uh, Chairman Jordan Bry- Byron, um, yes, I think the issue is they're used at dinnertime, but, you know, whether, um, you know, there, there are sometimes they're, they're used during the day. If you look at Google Maps, they're used during the issue of Google Maps, but um, yes, they were, it was a concern of a loss of two parking spaces and, and, you know, supporting economic development in, in area that we're trying to build, uh, economic development with the additional, uh, developments that are occurring adjacent to this, and then soon across the street. Uh, hopefully, looking to bring a new character uh, to the corridor. But more importantly, what we look at is, is curb cuts is really a pedestrian experience, right? We're building a new West Avenue. We're building new streets that are around there, you know, that are really dependent, uh, and, and supported with, with, uh, pedestrian movement, right? Pedestrian movement is hampered when you have a number of curb cuts, and you, we felt that adding three curb cuts to one property was more than, than what was needed, uh, that was good, that could adequately support. Um, and felt that the, the operation continues to, uh, you know, that is operated with the, the curb cuts along West Avenue without challenge, um, and didn't see a compelling reason to, you know, in, increase, uh, decrease the pedestrian experience to increase the vehicular, um, options.
Thank you.
I have a, uh, follow-up question, uh.
Sure, go, go ahead.
Thanks, um. Uh, Mr. Travers, uh, curious, uh, if there's any concern about, uh, cut-through traffic? Uh, I, I wonder about like the gate on the European Auto Center, uh, if that was put in place in order to prevent folk cutting through that, that corner, cutting through that light. Um, I, I wonder if there would be a similar concern of cutting through this site, uh, by having those, uh, those connected, uh, roads through these, uh, curb cuts.
There, there was a concern. Um, the European Auto did block their spaces off, uh, for cut-through traffic. We, we do hear from, uh, from, uh, them, uh, regarding that, that issue, uh, but, you know, the looking for people to bypass, uh, a traffic signal is always a concern.
Thanks. I also am curious, um, your take. Sorry to put you on the spot here. Um, you know, l- looking at that, that fence and along that space, it, uh, it is, uh, maybe less maintained than, than ideal for a pedestrian experience. Um, and so I, I wonder, you know, with the proposed landscaping that we see around that proposed curb cut, if that were to open up, but maybe instead removing a curb cut along the southern portion of West Ave, so instead of having two curb cuts on West Ave, it's just the northern portion of West Ave, would that help address the, the concerns that TMP has? Does that make sense?
Uh, so, so it does, you know, and, 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 uh, you know, I think anytime that we can beautify the public right-of-way, right? We, we stand benefits, uh, to, to that. So, you know, TMP would always be in, in support of those, regardless of what the, the situation is. Um, and yes, I think, you know, if, you know, we have, right now, we have West Avenue with an extremely, with two extremely large, uh, curb cuts, right? If there's, if there's an elimination of one of those, it, but I think we still have to look at the issue of, you know, of the, of, you know, the cut-through traffic, and then the impact to, you, to what's happening on a local road. Um, you know, and then I would go back to, you know, the revenue-generated parking spaces that were designed to, to be supportive of, uh, you know, restaurants and, and empty retail that we have along the streetfront today.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, if you have no other questions, could we call Matt Pop on so he can show you what the changes are proposed for West Avenue?
Certainly.
Uh, good evening. Matthew Pop, Landscape, Architect, Environmental Land Solutions, uh, in, uh, Norwalk, right down the street from this, uh, site. Um, let me just zoom out just one little click. Uh, we're proposing, uh, five shady trees. Those are larger growing trees. Uh, there's two oaks. Uh, um, oak over here on the street, oak in the back here, larger growing trees. You know, down where we have the curb cut and Merwin, we have, uh, two lindens, uh, frame in the entrance. And then kind of tucked in this corner here, we have a ginkgo. And then those are going to, the shady trees, larger grown ones. And then we have a smaller understory tree, or smaller tree right here, we have a shad. So there's actually five trees along the street, so one, two, three, four, five, and then the sixth one's back here. And then for, uh, along, we were talking about this building here before. We have, uh, evergreen, uh, screening, just arboretum. It's, it's a narrow growing spot, so we have a narrow growing arboretum there. Um, we have more arboretum back tucked along back through here. And then there's evergreen plantings up along, uh, this face of the, uh, wall or the building here. Um, you know, so that's it, uh, briefly, though, there's a plant list here, kind of a plant detail. There are some shrubs that are proposed underneath, uh, the two lindens here. Uh, this, uh, back to them, let me just zoom in, and then this tree up here, this is proposed. You know, uh, just on the streetscape, it's, it's off the site. It's approximately, you know, eight feet by, you know, six and a half feet, a planting area. Um, it's, uh, it's got a rubberized, uh, surface that we're proposing, um, for, uh, I'm just gonna move over. It's called the KBI Flex, a pavement. Um, it just gets kind of poured over the top. It's, it makes it neat. There's no mulch that gets kicked around. Um, and it's, uh, used quite a bit, actually in Stanford now, that's the, the, that what they use at all of their street trees. Um, so that's the landscape plan, um. Briefly, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Curry would like to respond to some of the comments that were made, if you'd be kind enough to let him, uh, join again.
Uh, has he been thrown off?
I'm not sure.
Oh.
Mr. Curry, okay, there you go. You're not on mute anymore.
Yeah, I just unmuted it. Sorry about that. Um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, one thing we had entertained in, as far as the pass-through was, uh, potentially putting an electronic gate on the, uh, on the driveway, so people can't circumvent the light over there. Um. And also just, uh, as far as the retail side of things, um, you know, I, I just wanted to comment that, and I hope I don't come across, you know, any type of wrong way here, but, you know, we have been there for ninety-five years, supporting the community, um, paying taxes, you know, uh, and we had that curb cut for many, many years. Um. So I just thought that should not go un, unnoticed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, any other questions?
Luke, if I may ask you a question.
Please.
Thank you. Uh, are we allowed to make any suggestions as to what we might like to see here beside what the applicant has proposed?
Um. Certainly, we've, we've, uh, we've done that before.
Okay. Um, if I may, then, I, I think Mr. Curry makes a good point, and that they had the curb cut and the city or perhaps the developer. and that they had the curb cut and the city or perhaps the developer of Waypoint eliminated it. I don't know why. I think it would be so much more beneficial to the people that live and go out to dinner or lunch in that area to have a nice driveway opening with trees on either side rather than, pardon the expression, but what really looks sort of like a junkyard right at the moment, because there's just all these old cars and things sitting in that space. And what if the applicant narrowed the curb cuts on the West Avenue portion? Because if you drive by now, it seems like one huge curb cut. It feels like you can just drive in anywhere there. There's really no delineation. And I think the European auto business made a good example of having a little grassy area and they have planted some trees that are growing. And why not plant some grassy little islands, if you will, between the front, like sort of lined up with the front of the building that faces West Avenue? So then you get some continuity of street trees, which to me make a neighborhood a lot more pedestrian friendly, where the curb cut, you know, you just have to pay attention. Um, and I, I, I respect that they've been there for a very long time and withstood the test of time and all of the development that has taken place in the neighborhood. Um, so, you know, I would kind of go for two small curb cuts on West Avenue or even one curb cut and then allowing them to go out on Merwin Street. Um, and I think the pedestrians, you know, the, the building got a curb cut, right? On Merwin Street on the same side to go underneath the building for its parking. So why should their business have had their space taken away? Much as I respect, um, Jim Travers and what they're trying to accomplish there. And two parking meters, I don't think should be, the, the revenue should not be any type of incentive for the city. You know, we, our, our incentive should be to make the city the best place we can. And whether it's two parking spaces or, you know, better greenery or whatever that we can kind of ask the applicant to do.
Uh, Tammy, I, 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 I think at the very beginning of what you were saying, you, you were making an, uh, 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 a false, um, equivalency. I mean, regard, it seems, uh, from, from what I heard, uh, whether, um, we vote to allow, uh, that curb cut or not, all of that junk is going to be disappearing. So that's not going to remain. Uh, so people will not be, be, be looking at that junk, um, in, um, in, in the future. There's been, uh, I haven't heard anything, uh, from, uh, the, um, current owner or the, um, new, uh, owner, uh, about, um, uh, making those, uh, curb cuts on West Avenue smaller. So I'd, I'd, I'd like to hear what they have to say about that. Um, since that's, that's part of your proposal.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, for interrupting you, given the, the, the cumbersomeness of this continued process. I'm, I'm dealing with conversations online with phones and texting back and forth. And I did ask Mr. Curry, and if the, the commission is inclined to allow that curb cut on Merwin Street, he would also be willing to narrow the curb cuts on West Avenue and certainly work with the staff to, if there is additional landscaping that's necessary, work with the staff to come up with something that's acceptable and also implement the landscaping that Mr. Pop showed for the Merwin Street curb cut. So we could narrow the curb cuts on West of it.
Um, well, I think, um, should that be done, I, I wouldn't leave out of, uh, uh, that discussion, um, Mr. Travers. Um, um, TMP still, uh, if, if, if we attempt to over, override, uh, their recommendation, um, they still have a role to play here and, um, uh, I wouldn't want to deny them that, uh, that role.
Mr. Schulman or, uh, maybe Mr. Club and, uh, if we do permit the curb cut, uh, doesn't give them necessarily authorization to build it. They still have to work with DPW and TMP in order to get that actual approval, right?
There will still need to be a DPW permit issued.
Yeah, so they have to comply with city standards. The other thing I think you should also keep in mind is beyond that, the, the curb cut is a certain width, but that area that I'm, I'm planning that Mr. Pop had, I, I, I'm sorry, um, uh, the engineer's plan that was up prior has the, it's much wider behind the curb cut. So what is going to happen in that space behind there? Is that, is that just gonna, are they have a cut through with, you know, with, with more junk on the side or what will happen in that space? Are they going to store materials there? What's going to be the outcome in that area?
It would likely, in large measure, be parking for customers. Couple of parallel parking spaces on either side of the, the entrance.
Uh, Richard, you have a question?
Yes, um, uh, one, one of the things, Louis, that you said to start with was that you wanted the answer to a couple of questions. And I thought one of those questions was, why was that curb cut taken to start with? Um, because I happen to agree with everything that Tammy said. Um, and I wondered to myself, wh- wh- why did the curb cut disappear? Because usually, i- i- in my experience, when you have a curb cut that's been in existence, um, it, it just doesn't disappear. So I just kind of wondered the answer to that question myself. And if Mr. Travers, uh, knows that answer, that would be great to hear it. And if he doesn't, um, and we're not going to give them back the curb cut, um, that's a, that's an answer we should have before we make the decision, I think.
Uh, so I would, I would not know the answer of why the curb cut was removed. It was 2019, uh, what I heard earlier, uh, which was, uh, before my time. But it would also been, you know, a DPW issue, uh, so, uh, we're not, we don't, we're not part of DPW. Uh, so different, uh, different agenda. So we, we do not have the answer, um, of why it would have been removed five years ago.
If I may venture a guess, it, it probably had to do with the development of Waypoint and where their driveway, their garage goes in. I can't, I, I'm looking at an aerial and I can't quite make out where the driveway goes in on the other side of the street. But maybe it's right in front of it. Would that make a difference, Mr. Travers?
So we, I can't speak for, and I believe the, the parking, the, the, they, their parking is further down the street. But I can tell you, uh, that I've not seen where one development comes in and we close, uh, you know, you, a, a curb cut for another development. That just simply wouldn't be something we would do.
I mean, I do think something we need to keep in mind is, um, with the closing, uh, of that curb cut. Currys has continued, uh, to, uh, operate. I don't know if they protested, uh, the closing, uh, of that curb cut. Um, but, um, uh, at least on the basis of this presentation, um, it doesn't appear, uh, to have harmed, uh, their business.
Well, Mr. Mr. Curry is currently on camera. Perhaps we could ask him. His, his hand is up.
Go ahead, Mr. Curry, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, at that time, my father was still running the business and he was still alive. He passed on shortly thereafter, uh, but it was my understanding at the time that he was approached, um, for both a sidewalk addition and that curb cut and told he had to close it. Now, I hadn't heard about the curb cut at the time, but, uh, we never got paperwork. We never got notified. We never really got asked. And as a matter of fact, when I said, well, they can't just take part of our property for a sidewalk and he challenged it and that got removed, um, so they didn't in turn take that for widening the sidewalk. So, uh, I'm not, again, placing blame on anybody, but, uh, I don't have any paperwork or documentation where we were notified, compensated or anything for that curb cut being taken or that we granted permission ever for that to be done.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Um, question for Steve. Um, what authority, uh, do we have to, uh, override, uh, a recommendation of TMP?
I mean, I don't, I don't look at it that way as much. I think that the, the question really is, is the curb cut permitted, um, by the city at all? So it's, it's not necessarily the planning. It may not be your call one way or the other. It might be, uh, other city departments. So it might make sense to just kind of punt that piece of it if, if the applicant is also considering alternative designs. I mean, if you look, I was just doing, did the same thing as, as, as Ms. Lingales did and looked at kind of an aerial view. It's basically, uh, it, from that stretch, the garage to the north, the entrance to the other development where they have that kind of arched opening. It's almost like one big curb cut all the way down to the corner. It's what it looks like. It's, it's kind of the, uh, you know, I know these are existing buildings and, and existing uses, but it's kind of the antithesis of what you guys want to see in the future, which would be regulated under your new, your new code.
Yeah, as someone who walks this area, I tend to walk on the other side of the street where there is a lot more trees and, and buildings because it is so open on that side.
Uh, are there any other, uh, questions, uh, for, uh, Attorney Sachi or any other comments?
I think just, uh, if, if I could have, make just a comment, um, I think the offer by, um, the applicant to close up somewhat the curb cuts on West Avenue and plant additional, uh, trees and, and green areas, uh, in, if they're able to get that curb cut on Merwin Street is, isn't something we should just throw away. I mean, we ought to at, at least look and see or, or find out somehow why that curb cut disappeared. I mean, I, I understand, Lou, what you're saying about them still being in business. But if I had to close off the gate on the side of my yard, I could still get in and out of my house, but it would be really hard for my landscaper guys and tree guys to do anything. So, um, it's, it seems like it would be seriously convenient for them to have that and enable them to do the type of improvements that we're looking to see on West Avenue. Because I doubt very much that Currys is going anywhere anytime soon.
In my opinion on this is that we really need to respect Mr. Travers', uh, opinion here. He's involved in the planning for the entire neighborhood. And there's a vision for what they want to see going forward for the entire area. And I don't think we should, you know, sit down here and talk for 20 minutes and decide, oh, we aren't going to follow their recommendation.
Right, um, Attorney Sachi, do you have anything more?
Um, I just would like to reiterate a few things. One is, again, this is site plan review. It's the same user, same uses. We're asking that a curb cut that was in existence for probably the amount of time that Currys was in existence be reinstalled and DPW had already given initial approval prior to planning and zoning and TMP becoming involved. And that the recommendation from TMP is just not a recommendation. There aren't any ordinances or standards that apply. And while I respect Mr. Travers', um, analysis and input, it's a recommendation. And you have in the past reviewed recommendations by TMP and determined that some of them are appropriate and some of them are not. In this instance, with the offer by Mr. Curry to narrow those curb cuts on West Avenue in exchange for being allowed to reinstall that Merwin Street curb cut, I think that's a, that's a very, um, beneficial compromise to him and to the city. And my, I might add that parking across the street at Waypoint is free to the public. So the, the issue of, it seems to me, the issue is two parking spaces that generate some revenue. And that's the reason why these parking spaces should be there rather than for the convenience and better flow and better operational functioning of a 95-year-old business in Norwalk. But I've, the, the proposal complies with all the site plan review requirements. All the SEAC agencies have signed off. And I suspect that if we were to return to DPW with the blessing of this commission, that they would issue a curb cut permit again for that location. We can narrow it. We can put some more landscaping on that side too. And if it's important enough for safety purposes, that Mr. Curry said a gate could be added, we'd be willing to do that as well. If you have any other questions for me or Mr. Pop, Mr. Martin, Mr. Curry, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Um, Steve, um, do we have some language on this, uh, that we can put up for discussion?
Sure.
Tim Curry's hand is still up. I don't know if he has.
I, I, I think it's been up since he first spoke.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It just won't go down. I tried to lower it. I apologize.
Uh, that's okay. Steve, can you make that a bit larger? Thank you.
So the one condition number 16, I'm not sure if you wanted to rework based on the discussion thus far, I mean.
Uh, uh, does a, a member want to, uh, suggest, uh, alternate language there?
I'll, I'll make a suggestion, Lou.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I would suggest that the applicant maintain or no, sorry. I would suggest that the applicant narrow the curb cuts, the two existing curb cuts on West Avenue to include a landscape island with a tree similar to other trees planted in the area. And then I think that's it for that number.
Um. Tammy, can, 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 can I suggest, uh, that the applicant work with, uh, uh, the staff, um, and TMP? Um.
Yes.
Okay, so it would read that the applicant will work with the staff and TMP to, oh, you didn't have to eliminate everything. I was trying to do it within the, uh, language suggested.
Well, it didn't seem like I was working with what you're about to say, so I got rid of it. I could first try to cut if you preferred.
Okay, so after applicant, work with the staff and TMP to narrow the existing curb cuts on West Avenue. Okay, and then I, uh, resume, uh, Tammy, you want a new one?
Well, I, I'm in favor of them opening the curb cut on Merwin Street. I'm not sure if that goes here. I don't think it does.
Well, no, I, that, I would think that would become 17.
Right.
So, because they both deal with curb cuts.
Right.
If I may interject, I think 15 has to be revised as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think 16 actually got copied onto 15. Thank you for that. Yeah.
Sorry about that.
And I would, uh, use, uh, language similar to 16 for 17. That again, uh, they work with, uh, the staff and TMP, um, to, uh, the, determine the size and location, uh, of that additional opening. Now, I have no idea how large the original opening was. Uh, it may have been too large. It's conceivable it was too small. Um, so it ought to be within, uh, the standards that are acceptable to TMP.
Is that good or anything?
Does it have to be a one-way in, one-way out or does it have to be two-way? You know, does it have to be wide enough to accommodate both in and out or do you make it just one way?
You read my mind, Tammy. I was about to ask that. And, uh, I, I'd prefer it to be a one-way to eliminate cut through, but I, I don't know which direction would make more sense than would defer to TMP on that. Um, and similarly, I'd ask the applicant not to put a gate in, uh, just from, at least not, that's. curb facing because I feel like that's not as pedestrian friendly to walk alongside like a chain link fence or a or a gate. It's much nicer to have that open landscaping.
I would agree. We must be frustrated traffic designers, but it would make sense to me for it to exit onto Merwin Street because that way you don't have people trying to cross over West Avenue if they want to go south.
Again, why don't we leave that uh, to the applicant, staff and T M P?
Very good.
Okay, uh, are there any further changes uh, suggested? You need to take out a space on sixteen between the word two and narrow. Thank you.
Also, how would we feel about changing work with to collaborate?
I have, I have no problem with that change. Thank goodness we have a staff who can spell.
Did you want both works?
How can you collaborate with? You can't collaborate the staff.
I think, yeah.
Put a with up there.
Yes.
Thank you, Galen. Yeah, same on seventeen. Okay, uh, we now have a motion. Um, is, is there a motion to approve? Tammy has raised her hands. I saw J J's hand. Can I take that as a second?
Yes.
Okay, uh, is there any further discussion? Um, if not, let's do a roll call on this.
Sure. I'll start from the bottom. Mr. Owina?
Oh, I thought I was at the top. Yes.
You're on the bottom on mine. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Mr. Shonan?
Yes. Okay, uh, it passes unanimously.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, um, next, uh, we have a public hearing. Um, twenty twenty four dash eleven. Um, S P, which is also a site plan review slash CAM, T R Sono Partners LLC, twenty five and thirty one uh, to thirty five South Main Street, District Two, Block Forty Five, Lots Twelve and Thirteen. Proposed construction of new extended stay hotel with one hundred rooms, eight stories, eighty five feet, uh, plus or minus in height, uh, building footprint of plus or minus uh, twelve thousand uh, square feet. Uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, so I'll take a minute to explain uh, how we operate public hearings while the uh, those who are going to uh, speak on this are brought over. Um, and, and initially, uh, the presentation will be made by the um, uh, applicant or the applicant's uh, representative. Uh, during uh, that presentation, uh, commissioners uh, are welcome uh, to comment or ask questions uh, of the applicant. When the presentation has been completed, we will uh, open it up to the public. Um, I'm going to handle this just a little bit differently. Um, since uh, we have a special um, uh, situation here. I am uh, the, the, the first member of the public that I'll recognize will be Attorney Blank. Uh, and um, any other uh, um, speakers he's uh, brought uh, with him. Uh, because he um, uh, has filed um, a notice of uh, uh, intervention uh, on, on this matter. And uh, following speakers may wish to comment on that. Um, we, again, we will, it will be opened uh, to any member of the public who wishes to speak. We ask that uh, uh, you give us your name and your address. Uh, keep your comments as brief uh, as possible. Uh, but also keep in mind uh, that you have only one opportunity to speak. And uh, as a result, uh, you should make sure that you include everything that's of uh, importance uh, to you. Um, also keep in mind we're P G rated. Um, once, uh, and uh, the, the public comment from our perspective, that is the commission members' perspective, uh, is to listen to what you have to say. This isn't a conversation back and forth. It's simply us listening to what you have uh, to say. Uh, when all members of the public have had an opportunity to speak, uh, we will close the public comment uh, period. And uh, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to what they've heard. And uh, the uh, commission members will again have an opportunity to um, uh, ask uh, questions. Uh, when uh, that has all been done, uh, we will uh, close uh, uh, either close the public hearing or uh, keep it uh, open. Uh, depending uh, on um, uh, what we've heard and um, on the pleasure of the uh, members of uh, the commission. Um, with uh, that, uh, Attorney Sachi, I believe you represent uh, the applicant?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you again for the record. My name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy, ten fifty five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And our firm represents the owner and applicant T R Sono Partners. T R Sono Partners is the owner of thirty one dash thirty five South Main Street and is the contract purchaser of twenty five South Main Street. Those two parcels together are the proposed property, quote unquote, for the new hotel that Mr. Rich is providing, proposing hundred and hundred room new hotel right at that location. Present tonight and so most of these individuals will speak is Tom Rich, Principal of T R Sono Partners, Alan Cosby, Project Manager of T R Sono, Michael Devonshire of John Heard and Corney Associates. He is an architectural historian and you may recall him from last year. I'll get into that in just a minute. Colin Grothier and Brian Goddard, Project Architects with Beinfield Architecture, Len DeAndrea, Principal and Civil Engineer with Rockovie DeAndrea Engineering, Nick Haven of S L R Consulting, Traffic, our Traffic Engineer, Todd Linval, Manager of the Stanford Courtyard, and also Kristen Sokic of Pro Park. The application for special permit in CAM was submitted on February twelfth. Neighbors were notified of the submission on February twelfth via certificate of mailing. Neighbors were notified of tonight's public hearing on April fourth and a packet with the domestic return receipt cards was delivered to Mr. Kleppen today along with copies of any letters for which the domestic receipt, return receipt cards had not yet been received. As mentioned before, the applicant is T R Sono Partners, owner of thirty one thirty five South Main and the contract purchaser of twenty five South Main. The properties in question are District Two, Block Forty Five, Lots Twelve and Thirteen. At the time of submission, the properties were designated as the Washington Street Design District and now those regulations apply to this application. Twenty five South Main is about zero point one one acres and is improved with a three story office building constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. And as you may recall from last year, thirty one dash thirty five South Main is a zero point two two acre parcel with a two story structure circa nineteen twenty seven. It's important to know some information as to what happened last year and that will help guide you in this application moving forward. This commission approved last year a special permanent CAM application to expand the existing Marriott Residence Inn at forty seven South Main with forty eight additional rooms and forty three additional parking spaces. This would have expanded the residence in to just over a hundred and two rooms. Just earlier this year, you granted an extension of time in connection with that approval that you granted in twenty twenty three. That proposal required the construction onto thirty one thirty five South Main and the demolition of the existing structure there. The owner of the Marriott property, who is now a petitioner on the petition for intervention, sought the expansion and T R Sono Partners handled the applications and the processes. The owner participated in, consented to and was fully aware of each and every step, including the zoning historical commission, state historic preservation office and design review by DeCarlo and Dahl. The owner was also fully aware that the building at thirty one dash thirty five South Main Street needed to be demolished in order to accomplish the plan. As you might remember, last year, the state historic preservation office considered the demolition of thirty one dash thirty five South Main, but closed this investigation in March of last year and did not move the matter to the state historic preservation councils, paving the way to the application of a demolition permit. Although that project was approved, for whatever reason, the deal with the residence in and its owner never materialized. So the propose, proposal before you is to once again demolish thirty one dash thirty five South Main along with its structure at twenty five South Main. Um, construct a freestanding eight story, a hundred room hotel unrelated and unconnected to the Marriott Residence Inn. The first floor would have first floor reception and work area. There would be six floor of rooms above it, a rooftop bar with solar panels on the top, a pool at the back for guests, bike racks, eighty three off street parking faces, spark parking spaces via an entire complete valet system. And the applicant seeks a waiver of a percentage of parking spaces in accordance with one eighteen twelve twenty one D as we fully believe that a hundred parking spaces plus are not necessary for this hotel and also other soed, associated site improvements. One of the features of this proposal is to create a one way drive loop or a circular system with an entrance on the north and exit on the south building. This has been thoroughly vetted by the applicant and its consultants. We believe it's a better, more efficient circulation pattern than the one way entrance exit that's been suggested by B F J and T M P. It provides a covered hotel guest reception area, ease of drop off and pickup. Vehicles will move off South Main Street faster and sufficient queuing drive, had, drive lanes have been provided within the structure so that there isn't an issue of vehicles queuing up on, onto South Main or not having enough space to move in and circulate around the building. It also eliminates interior conflicts with vehicles needing to turn around and navigate other cars entering with the system that only had, with a proposal as B F J and T M P suggest, a one entrance exit opening at the north side of the building. Why are we proposing this application now and under the Washington Street Design District regulations? Well, the new regulations would limit a hotel to six stories and that would reduce the number of rooms substantially, making it economically infeasible to proceed with that hotel under the new regs. There are many benefits that this hotel would bring to South, South Norwalk and to the city of Norwalk in general. It will bring a hundred new people to Sono who can patronize the restaurants, the movie theaters and the other retail stores and attractions in South Norwalk. Four hundred thousand dollars in new city property taxes compared to about fifty six thousand now. Seven hundred thousand dollars in hotel tax rate, in the hotel taxes. Anywhere between twenty and twenty five full time jobs, two hundred construction jobs. And with the loss of the DoubleTree Hotel on Connecticut Avenue, as we mentioned back in March, when we were before you, there is an always a need now, more so than ever, for more hotel rooms in Norwalk. Sign offs to date, we've received Health Fire, S N U, D P W comments were responded to. We just received T M P comments yesterday, nine weeks after the submission of the application. We had two meetings with representatives from B F J, one last Friday and one yesterday. Yesterday's meeting was also joined, joined by representatives of T M P to discuss their concerns and we discussed our responses and our rationales. We also had a meeting last week with, with the redevelopment agency. So that's a general overview of this proposal, a new hotel in South Norwalk offering a hundred rooms adjacent to the Residence Inn in an area that uh, more people, more people walking around, more activity can only benefit everyone. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Colin Grothier of Beinfield Architecture to walk you through the pro, the project, take you through the architectural style, the uh, floor layout, and then he will be followed by Michael Devonshire, our architectural historian, who can discuss his findings of thirty one thirty five South Main and also twenty five South Main, then Len DeAndrea, and last but not least, certainly Nick Haven. We also will reserve time for rebuttal and also responses to what I'm sure will be Mr. Blank's presentation to you. So that's uh, brief as it can be. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Grothier.
Thank you, Liz. Um, Commissioners, uh, it's a pleasure to be back for you again. Uh, as Liz said, this is the second time you're hearing this, but there are differences. Uh, I believe she already covered those. Um, we're familiar with the site. This is uh, the downtown Sono area. Uh, site's located right here on South Main, just south of the railroad bridge. Existing residence in is right here.
Colin?
Nope, sorry.
Can we share your screen?
Been a while. I'm out of practice. Let me get you guys back on my other screen so I can see everybody.
Maybe just a bit bigger.
What's that? You guys?
No, uh, your picture. Um, you're, you're, you're taking up only about a third of the screen.
Should be the whole thing.
Yeah, Colin, your screen showing, shows the drawing and then the other half of the screen is the, all your windows that are open.
Oh, lovely. That one.
That's better.
Sorry about that. Probably slowed down everybody's video too. My apologies. Okay, neighborhood. Right, we all know where it is, but I'm going to point it out anyway. It's the one with the box in it.
Hmm.
Right there, that's our site. This is the existing Sono uh, Residence Inn. Got the train tracks and the Norwalk River, and then this is Washington Street uh, downtown. This is our uh, rendering of the proposed building. Uh, the basic design approach was to be respectful to the architecture of the street and maintain the traditional forms and rhythms and materials. Conceptually, we laid it out as uh, three facades, uh, three kind of discreet facades, two primary and one recessive. The primary facades are traditional brick with differing aesthetics. And uh, the recessive facade is a cement panel uh, system with a more traditional window pattern. So kind of blending a, a more modern material is an intervention between the uh, the existing Residence Inn and the, the newer development. Uh, we feel that this composition complements the adjacent Residence Inn and overall mass. And yet essentially, uh, it, it's able to read as three separate buildings that each contribute in different ways to the streetscape. This is a view looking uh, north on main, on uh, South Main Street uh, towards the railroad bridge. Uh, here you can clearly see the building articulation uh, in the vertical, the different vertical planes of the facade. It's also a good representation of the horizontal stratification of the building and the design. You can clearly see that each building, uh, except for the, the recessive facade has a distinct uh, base uh, middle and top. And uh, the middle building, the middle mass and the uh, the northernmost building do relate in height uh, to the existing Residence Inn and to the buildings across the street uh, which are fairly large. The, the fire insurance building and uh, the adjacent cast iron facade building uh, is also very tall and similar in height. Uh, the main entrance to the building is located uh, front and center. So right here, so it's not only is it positioned in the central mass, it's got a, an entry canopy uh, over the sidewalk and the demarcation flags and signage and it just so happens to be the terminating vista of uh, Haveland Street. So anybody that's traveling to the hotel or traveling into Sono that comes up Haveland Street is going to be presented with uh, the, the front door, literally the front door of this hotel uh, in this nice canopy and inviting environment with this double height space. At nighttime, it should be a really impressive uh, illuminated space that, that looks like someplace that, that you want to go and it'll really draw you down uh, Haveland Street uh, from there. So we think that's going to be a very impactful and important facade. Um, one of the interesting things about this project is that we had the opportunity to engage uh, the train tracks and train passengers with our architecture, which is something that we don't usually get to do. Uh, to that end, we were interested uh, in expressing uh, some of the building to the riders on the train. Uh, we're suggesting a folly here that alludes to the steel structures associated with railroad infrastructure like the nearby bridge and historic catenary towers. Uh, this whimsical element creates an unexpected moment of interest that passersby on the train and is something that adds to the sense of place and wayfinding for the hotel. A pause on this side, uh, which isn't, which isn't a photo rendering, but it clearly depicts the street conditions of the proposal and I'll give you the building metrics. I think Liz just gave them, but uh, eight stories, eighty five but eight stories, eighty-five feet measured to the flat roof, hundred hotel rooms, eighty-three valet parking stalls. It's approximately six thousand square feet of hotel amenity and lobby space. There's an outdoor pool that's proposed that you could see in the previous rendering and the hotel back of use, back-of-house uses, including linen and trash, and support-type rooms are generally concealed from the public view and don't impact the street, except obviously during trash tipping. But that's, the trash room is located inside the building and concealed from public view very most times of the day. This is the architectural site plan. You'll hear more from civil and traffic guys on this, but we've got South Main Street here. This is the existing Residence Inn with their curb cut. We're proposing two curb cuts and a circulation that rotates through from the north is the entrance into this valet court where guests can be received and then come right into the lobby. And then there's a vehicle elevator back here, which serves three levels, two levels of parking and the grade level. And then the discharge from the hotel where guests can leave and go either northbound or southbound on South Main Street. This is the first floor, a little bit more detailed plan. The trash room is located here inside the driveport and is concealed from view. During trash tipping times, that can be wheeled out to a receiving vehicle that picks up the trash and carted away. Guests can still enter when the trash truck isn't servicing the facility and circulate around. Got the hotel lobby, you can see the, we're proposing a rotating door to let guests in and the elevator banks, hotel program, and the grand lounge, as it were. And there's paving materials on the driveports where they they enter the building to just create a better sense of entry and a landing pad for the arrival sequence of guests. The almost typical guest room layout, but this is the first level above the hotel. You can see that there's a little bit of function space on the south side. And this is the proposed pool and pool deck. Some of these guest rooms, abutting that courtyard, have their own private terraces. And then the guest rooms fronting on the street are just standard guest rooms. That continues on the typical guest room level where all of the guest rooms are just full-size. And at the penthouse level, you have the, it kind of inverts itself where the rooms that are on the streetscape get the terraces to provide a little bit of a massing step back and relief at the top of the central mass and also some outdoor space views for those units, guest rooms that are at the top level. This is the image of the rooftop, so solar panels, rooftop, mechanical units, elevator lobby, lounge, and bar program. Facades, this is just a flat image of the facade, but you can see we've got, this is the brick composition with larger oversized windows, really let a lot of light into those facades or into those guest rooms, double-height base in the central portion, the canopy, street trees, vehicular exit, vehicular entry. This is a little bit flatter of a facade, more of a punched brick opening, but still traditional windows and patterns and some thick striated brick pilasters at the base. So really an important facade and an important composition of buildings is what we're trying to go for there. The other facades on the north and the south are relatively simple because they are on property lines, so there's a very limited amount of menstrration you can do there. We did open up this because the adjacent building does have some windows in there to allow some light and view into the receiving courtyard. So that's kind of helping out our neighbor to the south, north a little bit. This is the view to the north. Again, we're abutting the Residence Inn, so this is largely their parking deck and their blank wall that's facing us, so it mostly won't be visible to anyone. And then this is the train track elevation, very similar to the existing Residence Inn, brick aesthetic, except this does have the amenitized courtyard for the guests of the hotel. And this is the folly element that would be visible to the train tracks, which also houses some amenity program for the hotel function space. Looking at briefly in section, you can see the guest room stack and the common corridor. The folly again, multi-level parking. This level is the entry level where you come off the street and you access, the valets would access a vehicle elevator back here that can park cars underground in the basement and then one level above grade below the amenitized courtyard and the first level of guest room suites. You'd be able to enter back into the hotel on that level and access some of the function space and facilities on the second level or mezzanine of the grand space there. This is just another sectional view that just shows a cut through the receiving entry where the guests would drive in and then be serviced by the valets in this area undercover from weather events and darkness. So it'd be well-lit parking area, really a better experience to get in and off the street and, you know, meet the valet, get assistance with your luggage if the weather's inclement and just be able to get into the hotel without feeling rushed or hurried out in a traffic-y street. That's pretty much the end of my presentation. Have questions, happy to answer them at the end, but that's it for me at the moment, so I'll pass it on to Mr. Devonshire. Thank you.
Are we, are we on?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have a visual presentation, but I was asked to provide some basic information about the two visits that I made to the sites, one last year to the Udlman Building and one more recently to the building at at the adjacent building. And I assume that you've seen the reports that I presented, that I submitted to the client. And essentially, the, what I determined from the previous year's visit was that the Udlman Building has received nearly no maintenance since the storefront was redone, I believe in the nineteen eighties. And as a result, unfortunately, there's been a significant amount of deterioration of the front facade to the extent where I noticed that there was oxide jacking of the lintels above the windows at each level, windows that in fact are not original, they're replacement windows. And that oxide jacking is affecting the brick masonry and is, was in my opinion, a public safety hazard, so much so that we got in touch with a structural engineer who specializes in historic preservation, Don Friedman of Old Structures. And he paid a site visit and he analyzed the facade and agreed with me. He and I concurred that in order to cure the issue of the rusting iron at the window lintels at each level, there would be so much brick removal, which unfortunately, because it's much later brick, it's twentieth-century brick that's set in Portland cement mortar, which is extremely hard. It would be very difficult, if not impossible, to remove that brick without destroying it. Ultimately, what that would result in, if the facade was reconstructed, it would be a complete disanification of the facade of that building. The windows are not original and they're in bad condition. The lintels, the repair of the lintels would result in destruction of probably up to fifty percent of the brick masonry on that building, if not more. So our plan B was to try and determine what elements of the facade could possibly be reused on a new building or in a new building. And in fact, the terracotta around the main door was pretty much the only thing that we realized could be saved and possibly reused. The limestone signage itself at the pediment is so pockmarked and at this point fragile that the removal would result in the destruction of that material as well. So what we have is a building that because of lack of maintenance is essentially one that does not lend itself to a good restoration. The attempt to restore that building would in fact result in its destruction. Now, next door at the McMahon Building, there was maintenance that occurred and there was, there was an attempt in the nineteen eighties as well to rehabilitate the front facade. And in order to do that, a new stucco, there was originally stucco on the building. A new stucco system was applied to that original stucco, which resulted in removal, probably the destruction of the original window sills and the original window lintels. The new stucco system followed regular building standards and provided soft joints in a grid on the facade that makes it look, I mean, essentially like a mid-century modern building rather than the vintage building that it is. And in fact, that grid is very visually obtrusive. In applying that, it is very likely that the original stucco was damaged or completely destroyed because to apply the metal lathe to which the stucco is attached involves pushing fasteners into the original building, which would have destroyed any stucco material that was remaining. Now, when they applied the new stucco, they changed the configuration of the window heads and sills, which had been very simple, and they now have absolutely no window sills at all and they applied a window head that is a splayed keystone that has nothing to do with what the original design of that building was. It's complete Disney. Coming down the building, they used new windows and they appear to be possibly the least expensive windows that they could have purchased because they are windows that are put together with finger joints. If you know anything about construction or furniture construction, that's probably the cheapest way that you can construct a window. And those windows are rotting away. They've already had trouble with them. You can see many, many, many wood Dutchmen where they've had to perform repairs on the styles and on the, on those sills, the wooden sills, which are actually made from just regular two-by-four lumber. They really kind of cheated out when that work was done. Coming down the building, the storefront, again, like the building next door, is a complete fantasy. It looks nothing, if you look at the original images of the building, the early images of the building, it looks nothing like the storefront that was on the building and it's wood and the wood is deteriorating. The one element on that building that could possibly be salvaged and reused somewhere is the decorative cornice, the sheet metal cornice. That said, I wasn't in a position to perform probes or enter that building to determine what the structural system is for that cornice, and it's very likely that it's wood. And unless that cornice was very carefully removed from the building, it would also be destroyed in trying to save it. So that's fundamentally the findings that I've made in reviewing both of these buildings.
Mr. Devon?
And I'm also happy to answer questions.
Yeah, Mr. Devonshire, the intervener seems to be, at least as I understand what I've read, suggesting that it's the milieu in which these buildings sit, that, you know, it's the entire area and that the loss of these two buildings interferes or deteriorates that milieu. Did you look at, did your analysis take any of that into account?
My analysis?
Yeah, please.
My analysis only had to do with, my approach was, what authenticity will remain? I was asked to do a forensic examination of these two facades and determine what might be original, what was worthy of salvage? You know, if there could be an adaptive reuse of the building, what would be worthy of salvage? And I approached these from essentially a preservation purist point of view. And in my view, the work that would be necessary in order to save the Udlman Building would be so much, it would be so egregious that there would be nothing of the original facade left. And so what you would have is a complete reconstruction, a Disney reconstruction of that building. And to me, that doesn't teach. I understand the necessity of having that milieu, but if the milieu includes a completely bogus facade, it sends the wrong message to the viewers of the building. And essentially, the same thing next door. If, although it was, it was maintained, the approach to that maintenance was misguided. And thus, what remains there is a building that really doesn't look anything like the original building. The only thing that's original is the massing of the facade. And so there are different levels of approaching the authenticity and the viewing of the authenticity of these things that I find completely lacking.
Thank you.
Sure.
Before Mr. Devonshire concludes, unless the commission has questions, Mr. Devonshire, if you would be kind enough to just provide the commission with your background and expertise, because I don't think you did that at the outset.
Well, no, I guess not. My information was in both of the reports. I've been in the field of historic preservation since nineteen seventy-nine. I'm the principal at Jan Hert Bacorny Associates. We are an architectural firm that specializes in historic preservation. I have worked on the US Capitol Dome. I worked on the Mark Twain House kitchen restoration. I have until recently been a New York City Landmarks Preservation Commissioner. I was on the board of the New York State Historic Preservation Agency. I serve on the historic, the board of the Historic House Trust of New York City and I serve on the Wood Committee of US ECOS, a UN committee that deals with historic preservation.
Thank you.
Yep. And I taught at Columbia for fifteen years and the University of Massachusetts for ten years in historic preservation.
Mr. Chairman, do you or any members of your commission have any questions for Mr. Devonshire?
Are there any further questions? Apparently not. Do you want to move on?
Yes, please. Next, Mr. DeAndrea, if you wouldn't mind coming on.
All right. Good evening. My name is Leonard DeAndrea, Connecticut Professional Engineer, principal with DeAndrea Survey and Engineering PC, which operates under Rocco V. DeAndrea, Inc. Colin, could you bring up some slides again and see if you can find our existing conditions, one that is highlighted? There you go, perfect. As we all know, it's a subject, property is comprised of two lots. These two would be consolidated if this application is approved. They're each individually trapezoidal in shape and of course, when they're merged, they will be trapezoidal in shape again, which is kind of important to note if you think about. And of course, when they're merged, they will be trapezoidal in shape again, which is kind of important to note as you think about um, operation on the inside of the building. The total impervious coverage presently is uh twelve thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet and it's about ninety-eight point two percent of the total. The left southerly building has uh no vehicular access and the right building has a driveway on the north side leading to a rear parking area. And essentially the entire two sites are impervious with virtually all drainage flowing to the rear. Uh, there's virtually no formal drainage system, uh, one or two drivels, I recall. Um, Colin, if you could slide down to proposed conditions with the uh highlighted area. I think it's another slide or two. One more. There you go. With um, the proposed development, we're actually going to reduce site coverage down to twelve thousand seven hundred square feet or uh eighty-seven point five percent of the site. And the building coverage will be a little over twelve thousand square feet or eighty-two point nine percent. The building itself now will be directed to an extensive subsurface infiltration system shown in blue at the back of the property. And uh, Norwalk has a very um, thorough drainage manual, which requires us to capture the one hundred year storm event. Years ago was the five year, the ten year, the twenty-five year, but in Norwalk, we have to capture the full storm hundred year event, which in this case, I think the Harvard Commission will be very pleased as it's certainly going to protect the waters of Long Island Sound. On the inside, which you can see within this drawing itself, there's a flow of parking. Um, there'll be floor drains, uh, minimal amount of collection, but that will be passed through an oil grit separator before leaving the property and connecting into the street. So that will be clean water exiting. As typical, all the sidewalks will be replaced. There'll be ADA ramps provided. There'll be street trees provided with the city specified uh flexi pave surround instead of the tree grates. Uh, personally, I think that's a great uh change and um, flexi play pave eliminates collection of litter. It's very good for ADA accessibility and it also prevents those weeds from growing up to the grate. So that's a nice, nice detail in Norwalk. Of course, for utilities, we'll provide the proper fire services. These are shown schematically in our plans now. There'll be a new sewer lateral computations have been done for that flows provided to W P C A. And then uh, in this location, we mentioned, we do have an existing driveway in the north side. Again, as you look at this, this trapezoidal shape, it doesn't lend itself for internal circulation in a, in a loop fashion. Um, you know, counterclockwise, full motion. Instead, it's best served by coming in on the north side and then circulating through where we have all the drop off ADA spaces, E V spaces, uh, three lanes. So there's plenty, plenty of queuing. And then we would exit out on the south side, which uh will have a stop bar and a stop sign and could certainly have a, a gate as well. So again, this trapezoidal shape is, is a, is a bit of a design challenge. And so we are looking as a team as the most efficient way to get cars off the street to queue them on the inside without having to do multiple turns on the inside to exit. And we think this is a, a very great solution. And also too, it does minimize curb cuts. Um, I believe the uh, from the railroad south to Elizabeth Street, I think it is, um, it's about five hundred and fifty feet. There's presently two curb cuts. This would add just one more. There's no street parking on our side of the uh road at this location. And so there's no loss of street parking. There's a bus stop just to the north of us and that won't be interrupted. And so because of this with no street parking, there's uh excellent vehicle and pedestrian sightlines. And it promote, it promotes a safe pedestrian experience as well as a very efficient valet parking operation on the inside and undercover. And essentially in conclusion, we um, this has been reviewed by the engineering department. They had seven comments that they issued a letter dated March fifth, twenty twenty-four. We addressed all comments and issued revised plans in a summary letter all dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. That's a quick summary of our uh part of this development and available to answer any questions.
Uh, just a, a curious question, Mr. Dandrea, the um, solar panels on the roof. Do you um, uh, have a um, number for the uh percent of uh electrical service they will provide to the building?
I do not, but I'm sure someone on the team does.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Schulman, seeing no others, if we may now turn it over to Nick Haven, uh, in connection with traffic analysis.
Okay.
Thanks, Liz. Uh, good evening. Thanks for this opportunity, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, uh, for the record, uh, I'm Nick Havon. Uh, I'm a registered professional engineer and a professional traffic operations engineer. I'm a principal at S L R International Corporation. Uh, and we are the traffic team, um, traffic consultants for the team. We developed the traffic impact study for the, for this one hundred room hotel project. We conducted a study in three phases. Uh, the first phase uh involved an evaluation of the existing traffic conditions within the study area, which included an inventory of existing roadway and intersection geometry, observations of traffic volumes and evaluation of uh safety conditions. Uh, in the second phase of the study, we established a framework for evaluating the transportation impact of the hotel and assessing the traffic demands forecast for the site. Um, S L R used the Institute of Transportation's engineers, the I T publication, the Trip Generation eleventh edition, which is the industry standard to estimate the vehicle trip rates for the hotel and to establish the net um, trips associated with it. Uh, according to the estimated trip gener- uh generation rates, we expect the hotel to generate approximately fifty-nine trips. Uh, there's thirty-one entering and twenty-eight exiting during the morning peak hours and hundred and one trips, thirty-one entering and, I'm, I'm sorry, sixty-one trips, thirty-five entering and twenty-six exiting during the evening peak hours. We use two thousand and twenty-six as the design year for the analysis. That reflects the background and combined condition. So the background condition is reflective of the future two thousand and twenty-six conditions if the proposed hotels uh project was not built. Uh, the combined scenario is reflective of the future two thousand and twenty-six conditions once the proposed hotel project is completed and operating. At the direction of the Connecticut D O T Bureau of Policy and Planning, the existing traffic volumes were projected to background two thousand and twenty-six conditions using a conservative growth rate of uh zero point seven percent per year. Um, this rate will also address the, any traffic associated with the planned and ongoing developments in the study area. At the third uh and final phase, um, uh, actually it involved conducting the traffic analysis to evaluate the intersection operations for both the background and combined conditions. We use this analysis as the basis for determining the potential project impacts for the development. Based on this study, uh, analysis, the capacity analysis for the proposed hotel, traffic operations along the study area roadways will remain generally unchanged from what they are presently. It is expected that the traffic volumes from the proposed hotel will have a negligible impact on traffic operations at the study area roadways and intersection as they will continue to operate at their current level of service with no significant change or delay on all approaches. Uh, the access um, uh, and egress to the site as uh was by everybody who talked before me, uh, is gonna be a, a one-way in and one-way out. Um, and the benefits of this two-way access is, is that it's gonna be a much smoother operation. And since it's a valet, twenty-four, seven valet parking, it's gonna have less conflict points and it's gonna be safer for pedestrians and cars. It will have less of a traffic issue on a South Main Street. There won't be any grid locks in the garage. And exiting and entering cars will not obstruct each other and queue uh will not back off into the South Main. And so also it's gonna be safer for the guests dropping off and picking up their vehicles since they won't have to cross a much wider internal two-way eye. So I'm done. Uh, I'm ready for a question.
Are there any questions? All right, Attorney Sachi, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think finally, uh, before you open to either additional questions from the commission or the public, I would imagine that Mr. Rich would like to address you with some comments that he has about development project and his vision for this site. So Tom, if you are on, it's all yours.
Uh, I don't really, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Chairman Schulman and the rest of the commissioners. Uh, thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I don't have a presentation uh per se, but I will uh say a few things now that Liz has invited me uh to speak. You may know that we developed the residence in. We put our heart and soul into that project. Um, there were actually two historic buildings that were on that property to, that were removed to make way for that development. Um, they weren't historic per se, except they were part of the same district that thirty-five and twenty-five are a part of. We ultimately, we, 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 we decided to develop that project um, um, despite a lot of people telling us that it was too risky, um, that it wouldn't work. Um, the neighborhood wasn't ready for it. But I had a vision um, for that project that it would work and that it would really enliven the neighborhood and that people would be excited about staying there because of the high walk score. It's a, a proximity to transit. It's proximity to the water. It's proximity to Washington Street. It, looking at it in hindsight, it seemed like a no-brainer. Why wouldn't you put a hotel there? But trust me, it was a very risky move. And a lot of people who were experienced hoteliers told me that we were crazy to do so. But anyway, we did it. As it turns out, our hunch was right. People love it. It's a very contextual building. Uh, we put our heart and souls into it. And it opened in June of nineteen. Um, of course, March of twenty wasn't kind to the hotel. But speaking to the strength of that hotel, we had one down month, April of twenty. And it started to come back up in May and June and July and August and September of twenty. Very surprising. I think Connecticut and Norwalk in general handled the COVID crisis very well. Cafes were open. People were looking to travel. And so we were the beneficiary of that. But in any event, fast forward, we decided to put it on the market and sell it so that we could do other things, build other projects and create other dreams and visions, not only in Norwalk here, but in, in other markets. But when we uh entered into an agreement with the group that bought it, who is now, you're going to find out in a few minutes, is opposing this application, we said the purchase of the hotel is going to be absolutely one hundred percent connected to your buying the property next door, which we had earmarked for a forty-eight room expansion. And of course, they said, oh, absolutely. We're gonna buy it a hundred times. We have a ream of documents with promises being made to buy the property next door. We then became, after we signed the con- two contracts, the contract to sell the hotel and also the property next door, the hotel property sold, property next door, we then became the laboring ore for the owners of the current Residence Inn. Our only job was to get their plan approved. Their plan was to demolish thirty-five South Main. And our goal was to get it approved. And so uh, we, we, we certainly worked together on the plan because it was originally our idea. But it was absolutely paramount that these be connected. And so I just want to point out that, you know, you're gonna hear uh about their opposition. And I hope that you can see through what's really going on here. Okay? They were part and parcel to our prior application to expand the hundred and two room Residence Inn by forty-eight rooms to a hundred and fifty rooms. It was their application. It was our application. They were the purchaser. And they ultimately declined to walk away. And they did walk away from a deposit. But that certainly uh leaves us in a very awkward position because we're not able to develop a hotel there. So uh, despite promises, et cetera. So now you're gonna hear that all of a sudden they've become historic preservationists. When they were part and parcel to the project, which the, the absolute uh, uh, integral part of it was the demolition of thirty-five South Main, which by the way, has already been litigated. Shep O declined to take up thirty uh five South Main. And we have a, a, an approved demolition for that building. And we'll be getting a demolition permit very shortly and demolishing that building. So you'll probably hear them talk about twenty-five South Main next. All of a sudden, as I said, they've become historic preservationists. And it's nonsense. What you're really seeing here, which is not a zoning issue, and I hope you're gonna see through it, is a hotel owner that doesn't want competition. And they're gonna do everything they can to get in our way, which is outrageous, given the history that I've just explained to you. So I just want to get that out of the way. As far as these buildings go, you heard from Jan Hert Bacorny, Michael Devonshire, that they're not worth saving. They're not. Nothing ever important happened there. Nobody of note de- designed them. Nothing was invented there. You know, I love old buildings. As you know, I've been involved in South Norwalk for fifteen years. I owned most of Washington Street. We did a lot of the facades. And uh, you know, I, up until six months ago, for twenty-six years, I lived in a building that was on the National Register of Historic Places in Stanford. I miss it today and I regret selling it. But we've, we have a good record in historic preservation when something's worth saving. Right now, the benefits far, far outweigh anything to do with these two buildings, the property taxes, the hotel room sales taxes, the jobs that are gonna cre- create it. We have, Liz hasn't mentioned this, we have forty-seven support letters. And maybe she'll get into that with her closing and I'll leave that for her. The whole neighborhood wants this project. Um, you're also going to hear about the curb cut thing and I'll, I'll just be very brief on this. What's happened with T M P is they've prioritized the lack of curb cuts over the efficiency of the operation for the visitors, for Uber drivers, for taxis, for hotel guests, et cetera. They want us to have a single entrance on the north part of the project like the Residence Inn has. It's awkward when you get in there. We designed, I think Beinfield has done an amazing job with this project in every way, from the design uh, but to the layout. It's a tough site. It's only fourteen thousand square feet. It's thirty percent smaller than the site we have next door, had next door at the Residence Inn, which we had enough room to put in ramps and to have some maneuverability in there. Here, we had to go to car elevators, which we've done successfully in other markets. And they were great, great space saver. Um, but our, our uh access to the site w- with automobiles and egress, our in and out is a really great solution. You drive in uh, off of uh the north side of the site and you're greeted in a climate-controlled, well-lit environment by the valets who are going to uh, take your car, empty your trunk, et cetera, help you go in, and they'll whisk your car away. If you're dropping off, you're gonna pull in on the north side of the site. And they'll whisk your car away. If you're dropping off, you're going to pull in on the north side of the site, drop somebody off and circle right out. It's very smooth. Having two-way traffic in there, trying to go in to a dead end and then turn around and back out. Is not, not ideal. It can work. It can work, it works at the Residence Inn next door. They only have one way in and one way out, but it's awkward and we're trying to create an improved situation. And so I hope that you will take these comments into account. Uh, when considering, uh, everything here. I, I just think that, you know, we put our heart and soul into our projects and. Uh, this one is, is really, really clever how we've, we've been able to put this building. Uh, within the confines of the existing zoning on this site and to create another hotel. Uh, in a growing neighborhood that's going to support all the businesses and create excitement. I would say to those who think that we're going to create competition, you're all wet, by the way. Because we've spoken to H V S about this, this is Hospitality Valuation Services. And their opinion is, no, this is not going to be bad for the Residence Inn. This is going to be good for them because it helps create more of a focal point for the whole area. So this is going to be a case of one plus one equals three, not two. And eventually they'll get there. I hope that, uh, it's not going to take that long, but I'll tell everybody who's listening, I'm not going anywhere. And we're going to build this project if you all approve it, and I hope you will. And I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Schulman.
Mr. Schulman, that concludes our, our primary case to you, so to speak. We wouldn't deserve time for rebuttal and comments at the end, but certainly any questions you have are happy to answer them.
Well, I'd, at this point, uh, like to, uh, hear from, uh, Frank Fish and his associates on. Uh, their peer design review.
Good evening, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I can.
Good, thank you. Um, my name is Frank Fish and, uh, attending with me is Suzanne Goldberg from our office. And, uh, I'm principal of B F J Planning. And as you know, we've been retained in Norwalk for many years, particularly in the Village District, uh, reviews. Uh, to do peer review, uh, for the commission. Uh, and in this case, also the redevelopment agency is, uh, involved. Um, so I'm hoping that you got our, we had two memos, one of, of April third. And then we, uh. That memo went to both Planning Department and the Redevelopment Agency. And then we also had a meeting yesterday, uh, with, um, both. Planning Department, Redevelopment Agency, and T M P. And based on that meeting, we slightly, uh. Modified our, our memo, and I'll get into how we did that. Um, and that memo is dated April sixteenth. The, the design comments are essentially the same. The only comment that really changed is, um, the view of sort of all the agencies. On, uh, what's been discussed, and that is that, uh, our primary recommendation is that. This should be able to have one, uh, entrance and exit in and out. Uh, at the northern part of the building. And the reason for that is the design guidelines of the, uh, T O D District. Uh, suggesting that, um, curb cuts be limited, uh, to one. And we believe that that could and can work well. Uh, actually, as, um. Previous speaker, Tom Rich, just said, um, the building next door, Residence Inn, works with one. Uh, entrance, both coming in and coming out. Uh, actually, our experience with, uh, valet parking is that valet parking, uh, can work in this current building very, very well. Uh, as they've, as they've mentioned, but that it can work with one, uh, entrance and one exit. As many valet operations and other hotels, uh, uh, work. Uh, we believe there's room enough in this building. To make that two-way valet system work very well. You come in. Uh, just as they described, valet, uh, would pick up the car. They either park it on the ground level, on the first level, or move it through the elevators up to an additional level. But with the second, uh, exit, or the exit out, closed. Um, valets simply take the cars out when someone is leaving, uh, and bring it back the same way that they entered. And the two-way system, in our view, does work, uh, well. And that there's, uh, for valet service, for people coming in and out of the building. Uh, it will work very well. That's been our experience. Um, they, uh. Mentioned the garbage, uh, truck in and out. Um, we've raised that in our memo. I think that's a. A difficult one, but it will work even better. But what happens there is the garbage truck is going to stop, uh, as it comes into the building. If that area is wider, the one entrance to the north. Um, wide by mo- wide, I mean, expanded to twenty feet wide or twenty-two feet wide. You're going to have more room for safer operation when that truck comes in or leaves. Uh, I think they've done a, a good job on the building and the design and the functioning of this. But we do feel that the one. Entrance not only works next door, uh, but it will work very well with valets. Um, then there's a question particularly for people coming and going to the hotel. There's also been a question of, um, people that might be coming by Uber or taxi. And that's not an easy issue, um, because most people coming, in our experience. Are going to, the Uber's going to just drop people off right in front of the hotel and they're going to walk in the main door. Uh, in some cases, they may not. And they can go into the building. And that's okay. We believe they, there is enough room in the building, in the current design. Slightly modified to just, um, make sure that the, uh, exit is turned into a turning area. For them to turn and come back out. And I'm relying a bit on our. Uh, traffic engineer, my partner, George Akkumar, on this, who's designed some of these. Um, so we do believe that that can work. Um, and thereby it would, uh, conform with the guidelines of the T O D, uh, District. And that's been made clear, I think, to the applicant, uh, by the redevelopment agency. Uh, but also by T M P, who also wants this limited to one, uh, curb cut. Um, we also believe that the curb cut, which provides a exit currently in the design. Is, as you all know, and, and they've just mentioned, is just north and adjacent to the existing. Entrance and exit of the Residence Inn, creating more, uh, complicated, uh, movements. Uh, traffic movements within very close proximity of each other. So we do think that the one entrance to the north is a better solution here. We think it's a solution that works, can work very well. And then it will conform to the design guidelines of the district that this is in, the T O D District. You would have only one curb cut. It would be away from the Marriott curb cut, which is to the south. And we think it would be, uh, safe and good and actually better operating in terms of that garbage truck coming in and out and loading and unloading. So we recommend that to, for your consideration. We also have in our memo, um. A number of other things, I would consider them, uh, things that can be, uh. Easily, more easily accommodated by the applicant. We think this overall is a. Building that conforms to the overall zoning code of the, uh, you know, of the district. And, but we, we do mention that, uh, complement the, the design on the vertical. Uh, elements of the building, trying to get it into three separate, uh, sort of building forms. But we do think the horizontal, uh, sections or horizontal breaks. Could mimic the scale a little bit better, particularly of the existing building just to the north that would not be demolished, it'd be the only building. Uh, remaining. We think that could be done. Um. We also think the windows on the second floor could be punched a little bit more to relate the size and style of the surrounding buildings. Um, and then also, we think that the pedestrian entrances. Uh, this is mentioned in the design guidelines for the building. And those, those entrances, by the way, it's really one entrance right now. Uh, with the revolving door in the front that was discussed by the, um, uh, applicant's architects. We think they could be recessed just slightly, and that, that would add to, um, the. Buildings that to the north now, which would be demolished, they have these recessed entrances now. And you'd pick that up a little bit, and we think it would work, uh, just as well, uh, for this, um, for this applicant. The other thing is that we also think that a second egress could be done. Uh, more easily, actually, if the, uh, I'm, I'm talking about a pedestrian egress here. At the southern end of this building, uh, could be done if that, um, not if, but, uh, hopefully if. That, um, exit were eliminated for cars, you could have another pedestrian exit there. We note that there's some. And I'm not criticizing the designers here, we think some of the drawings that we got simply may not have been completely finished. Um, there's a couple of, um, exit ways that were, they seem to, uh, seem to just empty into the garage. We think there might be an opportunity. For another, uh, exit pedestrian-wise, uh, at the southern end of the building. The other thing about that southern end is we think that the building, the proposed building. Could be better related to the existing hotel to the south, namely the Marriott. We think there ought to be a partition wall or a fence so that, uh, there's a slight. Uh, I had the chance to go back in, in the Marriott through its entrance. Take a look at it, there's a space, just a vacant space, that's sort of a no man's land, if you will. And that, that could be, uh, easily, I think, treated, uh, well by the, by the applicant. Um, so those are, uh, some of the design issues. Um, we also mentioned in, in this that the, some of the fiber cement panels, we think are, are not the best choice. That there might be some other choices in terms of materials. It's a minor comment, but it's one way hope they can, uh, they can take and, uh, uh, think about. Our major comment remains, uh, what the city agencies have said, and by the city agencies, I mean. Um, redevelopment, Planning Department and particularly T M P. All feel that, uh, as we do, uh, that the way to meet, uh, the design guidelines of this area. Design guidelines by the city is to limit this to one access point, which is an entrance in and an exit out. That would be twenty feet or twenty-two feet wide. And that that would meet the design guideline. So, uh, we think that, uh, as you consider the building. If you, um, move to approve this, um. I, I think that should be, um, a condition, a condition of approval. We've mentioned in, at the end of our, um, memo. Uh, other, giving you a summary of our recommendations, I don't think I have to go through and. Read all of those, but there is a summary at the end of our, um. Recommendations, but it does start off with the elimination of the southern garage opening. We don't think it's necessary. We think that valet parking can work very well, uh, inside the building. Um, it will give a choice for Uber drivers or FedEx drivers to come in or not. Um, we find that in many instances, um, and I just happen to be. Uh, in Minneapolis, looking at another hotel project and, um, we think that the. The, this will work, some people will choose to go in, some of the drivers. But some taxis and Ubers are just going to stop in front of the building. And that is just a reality of how they function with a hotel. We think this will be, in summary. A better, better hotel, better for the applicant and of course the city, and pedestrians walking on the sidewalk. To have that one entrance. So with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you. If there's. Uh, further questions on this, I'm, I'm, I'll stay through this to, uh, answer them.
Uh, are there any questions, uh, for, uh, Mr. Fish?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, yeah, one of the, uh, things that came up, I believe, is Mr. Devonshire had raised about the possibility for the cornice on twenty-five main to be. Recoverable. I- is there an opportunity here that you see for that to be integrated into the design at all?
We think there may be, and I'm sorry I didn't cover everything in our memo, but, um. Uh, I was very interested in his description of, of, uh, things that could be recovered. And we mentioned in our memo, particularly, there's an opportunity to possibly do that. Um, and we're suggesting at the southern end of the building where they may not have to redesign anything other than take out the exit. Uh, and, uh, consider what they could do with that. That's going to create new space, uh, for the design of the building. So. Thank you. You must have read our memo more carefully than I've, uh, reviewed it.
Uh, any other questions? Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Fish, in the. One entrance exit only design. Do the vehicles that come in have to back around, or is there space for them to actually? Turn without backing?
We believe that, uh, in front of where the elevators are. Uh, that's where a car currently, under the current design of the applicant, uh, which we have no problem with the design, it works. Um. You will come out of, you know, valet will bring that, uh, car out and then that car. Uh, the owner would get it and it would, um, drive out the second curb cut or, uh, in an exit. We don't believe that that's necessary. We believe that the car could be picked up. Uh, driven by, you know, this is all valet, so driven by the valet back to the central loading area. Uh, where, quite frankly, that's where they pick up things, that's been described to you. And that leaves space, space that's no longer necessary, which could provide a space for, for instance, a. If an Uber does drive in or a taxi drives in, could, uh, turn around. But the best turnaround and the easiest one to make is an H-turn, to, uh, turn into where that exit currently is. Back up and then drive out. Remember, um, that, uh, in valet parking, um, I'd also repeat something that I think the applicant. And the applicant's engineer agree with. This is a small, relative, small, medium-sized hotel. Uh, the, we agree with, um, um, Nick Ha- Nick, I keep calling you Ha- is it Haven? I'm sorry for mispronouncing your last name, but their engineer. Um, I, I think we, we agree with the overall outline of this. Uh, but we believe that the valet service will work very well and that the occasional person that comes in, that might be a. A taxi driver, let's say, can turn around, would be able to turn around. Will it create, will it need a little redesign of this? Yes, but minor. Uh, is, but would be our, uh, view of this. Um, and the other reason I say this, and it was something that actually Tom Rich mentioned, and also Nick, their traffic engineer. This is a low. We don't disagree with their numbers, their, uh, uh, this is a low-volume hotel coming in and coming out. Um, we think the valet service will work very well, as they've described it, we think it will work just as well. Uh, with the two-way system and that it won't create unnecessary backups. Um, this is a low-volume sort of operation. In other words, you're not, you're not going to have, um. You know, fifty, sixty cars in, uh, peak hour. It doesn't work that way. They're going to be spread over. When you think of a hotel, we were saying this to them, and I think you've experienced this probably. A lot of people are checking in, uh, to the hotel, uh, later in the day. That's sort of one way coming in for a lot of cars. Checking out in the morning, that's one way going out. This, uh, because the volumes are low here, we think either option here. Is going to work well, is going to work okay. But from a pedestrian point of view, and compliance with Norwalk's own guidelines. Uh, the one way in and out is the best, uh, solution.
Thank you. So if, if somebody, eh, had a wedding party there, say for example, and they hired a limousine. Would the limousine be able to come in and, I'm not familiar with the term H-term. But would they be able to do an H-turn and get back out?
It depends on the dimensions of that, uh, limousine, uh, but. Uh, but the other thing that could happen there effectively is that it, in likelihood, and we, we believe, we've seen this in most hotel operations. Uh, the limousine, the taxi, the Uber, many times you're going to drive up right in front of the hotel. Everybody gets out, walks into the main entrance to the hotel.
Tammy, I can actually share, uh I saw not too long ago, uh like a limo bus, if you will, uh pull up in front of the residence in for what appeared to be a wedding party getting in, and it looked like they uh were going in, they were, they were out front. So I, I'd anticipate something similar here, too.
Except it doesn't fit.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I just answered your question again. What's happened here is there's no parking here. Uh, limousine could easily drive up uh right in front of the building. There's no parking in front of the building. That's the current situation. It's also a hydrant, not far from the, they're going to have to move the hydrant, actually. Uh, it's on their designs, and that creates an area where the fire truck, uh you know, in terms of fire access, you don't want parking there. But in terms of a drop-off by someone, they're going to be able to drop people off. Um, and that may not be desired or the desired uh kind of uh approach that the applicant would like to take, but we think that that's going to happen in any case. Uh, however, we do believe that the ordinary, you know, FedEx truck, vehicle, taxi and um you know, Uber or whatever can drive in, they'll be able to drive in. If you're, if you ever go into a situation where there is um valet parking, those valets really can move vehicles around and they don't need a lot of room to do that. So I think, we do think this will work well. We think they have another option. Um, they did tell us that they explored it in the beginning, um and we think they should just revisit it.
Okay. Uh, Mi- Mr. Haven, I'm going to ask you to hold your response uh until after we've heard all the public comment. And uh so you will have an opportunity to respond uh to uh to Mr. Fish's comments. Um, with that, if there are no other questions, uh we will open this uh public hearing uh uh to the public. Uh, again, uh I uh ask that just give us uh your name uh and address. And uh the um the first person uh we're going to allow to speak is uh Attorney Adam Blank. But before we do that, uh Steve, can you explain uh to the public uh how they can request uh the opportunity to speak here?
Sure. So I believe there is one person dialed in by phone, but um everybody that's attending virtually, there's a raise your hand button, which is on the bottom right portion of the little menu bar at the bottom of the screen. Um, if you were by phone, it's star nine to raise your hand and star six to talk once you're unmutted.
Okay. With that, uh Attorney Blank?
Uh, thank you, Chairman, uh Showman, members of the commission. Uh, Adam Blank live here in Norwalk and I'm counsel for uh HASP Core C T R E L L C, but I'm going to just refer to them as the, the residents in um because it's a little easier to say. Um, the, I've got some, some folks here uh with me today. Um, I'm going to give you a not-so-brief presentation to start, um and then we'll hear from the rest of the team. Um, the, before I get into sort of what the formal remarks I had, I, I will comment that um, you know, I think I know my client has a very different story about who the good guy is and who the villain is in the story uh with uh Mr. Rich. Uh, I'm not going to get into that with you because I just don't think that that's particularly relevant to your determination as to whether the project complies with the zoning regulations or not. Um, I, I will though speak to the, some of the, they raised the financial benefits of this project. Look, obviously, we're the residents in next door and we don't want it. Um, I'm not going to hide from that. Almost every speaker that you're going to hear from, from the public on any matter is speaking because they have an interest in the project, whether it's for an approval or for denial, because they think it has, it affects them financially because it affects them civically, has some impact on them. So, so of course, we're here because we think this will negatively financially impact the residents in. Um, I, I will note that, yes, they, they did apply through, through Tom Rich. They bought the property from T R Sono. Where they bought their, their residence in, there was a hope that they would do a fifty-room expansion on the the thirty-one, thirty-five parcel next door. And that didn't go forward. You know what? It didn't go forward because they didn't think that the numbers worked. But it justified a fifty-room expansion, and now here we are with a hundred-room hotel proposed next door. We think that's going to be very bad detrimentally for this hotel, which also means the tax base, it also means our employees. We don't think it's, it's, the, the financial benefits are anything near what's been touted here. We, we'd also point out that since the Doubletree has closed, our occupancy has actually decreased. It hasn't gone up, it's gone down. And you're going to get in about a week from me on an unrelated applicant who has no interest in this at all, a two-hundred-room application for an extended stay hotel in a different section of Norwalk. So it's not like there's not um more rooms coming in to the market in the near future. Um, so uh with that, though, I do want to move to the sort of the meat and potatoes here. Um, and, and there's two separate uh things, just to keep, try to keep separated a little bit in your mind is we, we're opposing the project on what I will call your, your sort of uh run-of-the-mill zoning grounds that you're used to hearing people oppose to projects on. And there's also this notice of intervention that relates to the historic aspect. And they, they sort of are separate. Um, we're going to, I'm going to detail the, 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 the normal stuff first, and then we'll hear from some of the historic folks on the team uh at the end to talk about the, the historic component of it, and I'll try to explain for you a little bit about what that intervention uh actually uh means. Um, with that, if I can just share my screen. Do you have, do you have my, you've got my PowerPoint up now, not my daughter, my dog?
Yes.
All right, I apologize. Um, so uh show. From beginning, here we go. All right, so um we've got uh a number of grounds that we think that this application ought to be denied and, and I'll point out that you really, you heard a lot about why the application ought to be approved, although almost none of it touched upon the actual regulations at hand. Um, and, and we think it ought to be denied because the traffic count, traffic study counts are really badly flawed, which we'll talk about, I'll talk about in detail. Um, the project fails to maintain a stable traffic flow, which we'll talk about. Poses a safety hazard for motorists and pedestrians, which uh is also noted, and we'll, we'll go into some detail on that, but in your memo from T M P, which I hope, and maybe Chairman Truman, you can confirm, I, I'm not sure. I know it was posted, at least on my end today. I don't know if the commissioners have received the, the T M P memo uh on this project at this point. Um, the um the uh valet system that's been proposed, it doesn't comply with the ADA. And there's no queuing study, um which shows that it, that the valet system will actually work. Um, uh, they've asked for a parking waiver. They haven't actually established that they're entitled to that waiver, which is their burden. Um, the peer reviewer who, who we just heard from found non-compliance in a number of respects, and, and I'm going to highlight a few parts of his report. Um, it's not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the design district regs. It fails to comply with the P O C D. And then this is the intervention portion, it unreasonably destroys the public trust in historic structures, and I'll talk about that at the end. Uh, so you're going to hear from me, Tim Nordwire and Malcolm McLaren are traffic engineers. They couldn't be here, so I'm going to talk about the traffic. But you do have a, a, a traffic review study from them in the record. Wes Haynes is a historic preservationist, he's going to talk about the significance of the structures um specifically and in context for the district and for Norwalk. Um, and, 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 and he's going to talk to you a little bit about why the fact that there may have been modifications made to facades doesn't mean that a building should not be preserved, particularly in a historic district. David Goslin is the, from Crosskey Architects, and he'll talk about the, the viability of preservation. And Todd Bryan of Heritage Resources, who, who I think you know, will talk about um historic preservation incentives that make preservation of at least one of those structures viable. So the, the traffic engineering review uh by McLaren, um the, the traffic um counts, uh they are uh dated, they were taken during COVID, um and I mean very dated, you don't have that almost ever. Um, the I T E says that they should never be conducted on a Friday. Um, uh, these in fact were conducted on a Friday. And I'll show you this slide, A K R F, who you folks hire as your own consultant, Marissa, does your peer reviews on the pending Main Avenue application. Her comment in the peer review was, they did a Friday and that you don't use Friday. It's not allowed under T I S and it doesn't represent a typical weekday because, and especially during COVID, that remote work is common on Friday, so you're going to have undercounting done on Fridays. And, and she asked them to redo their accounts on a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, which is what the, the traffic guidelines uh require to be done for weekday counts, not Friday unless you have some unusual, unusual situation. Um, so that the peak weekday hour volumes, um the, and it's in our traffic review. Um, usually you, you use the peak hour volumes for the site. Um, and in their report, they have those peak hours um listed, but they don't actually use the peak hours. Um, they use five to six, I think, PM, even though the peak was six to seven. Um, there, the I T E volumes for traffic from this site show that Saturday is going to be their busiest um peak hour, Saturday afternoon. Um, and actually, I, I know the peer review architect just said that you would never see, or that you wouldn't typically see sixty trips in an hour, but actually their, their own numbers say it's over sixty trips an hour on the Saturday peak hour. Uh, but they don't do an analysis of the peak hour uh traffic. Um, they also on the traffic volumes, in order to do their report, you've got to look at where traffic is coming and going. Um, and are you seeing now uh their, their traffic diagram?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so on there, this is, they're showing the trips entering and the trips leaving their site. This is what they're projecting is going to happen. So they're saying, when you leave on South Main here, that fifty, literally fifty percent of the traffic is going to turn left on M L K. And when you get to their hotel, fifty percent of the traffic is going to come in off of M L K. Now, in reality, it's almost all going to come from North Main. It's not coming from M L K. Um, you might have a, a, a bigger distribution towards M L K if this was retail or some like local specific kind of uh uh business. But this hotel, it's going to be predominantly out-of-town folks coming in, and they're not traveling on M L K to some local roadway. They're getting to ninety-five. If they're trying to shortcut through a way, which is probably a long cut, they're not going that way either. And if they're going up to Westport and they're trying to shortcut, maybe they're going to go down Washington Street. But again, you're not having fifty percent going to M L K. Um, so why does that matter? Well, it, it matters because they um that will deflate the impacts that their traffic will have on North Main and on Washington and on South Main by, by funneling it all off uh to M L K. The uh go back. All right, um, they um, they, their report uh fails to consider the future conditions um proposed or under construction, for under-construction developments, ten Monroe, seventeen Chestnut and the Webster Street redevelopment. Um, and that's noted in our report. It's also in the memo that you guys have from T M P, which, which says that they, they need to consider those developments in their traffic report. The the applicant's study shows an additional two-minute delay for cars coming from Washington Street and turning at the south or normain, south or north main, so in the background, this is from their report, they're showing about a four hundred and thirty-nine, four hundred and thirty-second delay originally. And then they show five hundred, five hundred and forty-five second, almost two-minute additional delay, and that's like an eight-minute delay, and that delay is backed up on Washington Street, headed back towards the, the, the bridge. Um, that's a two-minute delay, which is massive, um two-minute additional delay. I think that definitely constitutes a, a, an impact on uh traffic flow. That's also noted in the, the T M P memo as to why there is that two-minute delay shown in their uh report. Um, the so then, in the other issue that, that was sort of danced around, I mean, it's, it's certainly an issue that T M P has brought up, your peer review architect has brought up, but hasn't really been, I don't think hit head-on, is this multiple driveways that they've got, and there's no traffic signal, you're in between a crosswalk. There, there's going to be vehicles loading, they have poor sightlines, um, and it's sort of a recipe for a disaster. So if you're looking at the buildings, so these are the existing structures, this is a view from Havilland looking, looking across Washington, or looking across South Main at the two structures, and this is the twenty-five one, the new one they proposed to demolish. This was the, the other one that was always proposed to be demolished. They're proposing their entrance to the site around here and their exit here. You'll see that there's a very small gap and our building goes up to here with an entrance to the residence in. Um, in there architecturals, so right there was their entrance in and the entrance out. And you can see, you come in from South Main, you come in here, where they come out here, there's a building here, right? There's a wall. It's not open, this is not open air, and then you've got our wall here. So as our cars come out and turn left onto South Main and their cars come out and turn right, there's no sightlines here. Um, and this is a really dangerous condition, and it's made worse by the fact that the street here, I, I, I know, um, uh Commissioner Bryce mentioned that you know, the residence in, he saw there was a party bus loading in front of the residence in for a wedding. Well, there are loading spaces uh on the, in front of the residence in um that, that allow for that, and the room allows, the, the road has room to allow for loading here, and, and that is where loading occurs for the residence in. Um, this, because of the Havilland Street intersection and the crosswalk, creates a really unsafe condition. Again, this is the T M P, it's not just me and our traffic engineer, your T M P department has noted this as well, that this is not a good spot for loading, um because you're going to block sightlines to the crosswalk. You're going to block sightlines here as well, and there's not enough room because of the intersection, so you're going to block the actual roadway. Um, so they don't have it. They actually, in their, their, their formal proposal is, which is in one of their, their comments back to staff, is that they'll make their loading here in front of the residence in where our loading is. Um, and your regs actually do require loading spaces to be provided. You can waive that. Um, uh, and they're asking for that to be waived so that they can park in front of the residence in. Um, the um uh, let me see. Yeah, so right here, I have it. This is the quote from your rag. Um, the required amount of loading may be met on-street or off-street on the same lot where the use occurs or on an adjacent lot, subject to approval by this commission. It doesn't mean they have a right to do it. It means if you, you think that that's, that that's going to work. If you think that Ubers and folks are going to actually load uh a building away, uh I don't, but if you think they do, you theoretically, and you think that it's not going to conflict with our loading, then you could waive their loading requirement, which they're not, they're not providing. Um, and again, that's noted by T M P as well. Um, I mentioned that their, their traffic is going to conflict with the residence driveway and with the pedestrian. There's some serious sightline issues. In fact, they, they're proposing a convex, well, they're not proposing, it's noted in their traffic report, and it's noted in the um T M P memo as well, that they're proposing a convex mirror for this site condition that, that, that literally they're creating, they're creating um uh this poor sightlines, and they propose a convex mirror as a solution, which T M P noted is not a great uh solution um for that uh issue. Um, and if you haven't read through, and I know, I don't know if you intend to have Mr. Travers speak um uh on this application, but T M P, you know, usually they have a by the time it gets in front of you, a fairly um benign uh memo about what, what concerns they may have lingering. But this was a very, very extensive memo of non-compliance. But this was a very, very extensive memo of non compliance with this application with the regulations. Um. Uh, and. Which again included the nearby developments, um. I'll let you look at it on your own. Um, then it and this goes to, I know it's D P W, but it goes to your um, your review of this under the special permit criteria for. Uh, uh, stable traffic flow and pedestrian and motor safety. So the D P W has roadway standards, they have a a guide and um. Uh, I know Mister DeAndrea uh is uh excellent, um, but I I I I sort of disagree with one of the comments that he made. Um, I know that he's provided some comments to D P W in response to comments that D P W had about. Um, the project, some related to drainage and some related to their roadway standards, which concern driveways. Um, one of which was that they're classifying those two that they're one way entrance and exit those two drive aisles as as minor driveways. Um, and that's. D P W classifies them as major or minor. It's automatically a major driveway. If it serves a commercial use, which requires a special permit in accordance with the zoning regulations, so their driveways. Are major driveways, they're not minor driveways. Additionally, even if you question that, a major driveway can be up to twenty four feet, that's measured at the street line, not at the site. And and a minor can be twelve feet at the at the street line. Their driveways exceed twelve feet at the street line, so they wouldn't even fit as a minor if if they didn't, if they weren't a major. But they are a major driveway and that's really important because. You know, if you think about like a minor driveway, often that's like a a single family house. And you know, sightlines are important, but your traffic volume is so low. That there's less concern about accidents when you get to major driveways that will have carry a lot more traffic. You really want to make sure the sightlines are going to be good and you're going to avoid hitting pedestrians and motorists. Um, and so the sightline requirements for minor driveways are much. Looser and much easier to meet than they are for major driveways. And their application purports to comply with the sightlines required for a minor driveway, not a major driveway. Um, it is, and it these are major driveways, um, again. You know, this is from today from D P W, the proposed driveway would be considered a major driveway, I'll review the latest plans with that in mind. So they they don't yet it's have any kind of a sign off from D P W. And I and I don't think that can be a condition of your approval, that it's just hunted down the road to D P W. Because you've got to decide whether the sightlines and whether this this application is presented is going to pose a a pedestrian or. A a public safety risk, which we very much believe. Uh, it will under the current configuration, which I think your T M P believes as well, which is why they are proposing. Um, a one, a one way in or a two way entrance or or one drive rather than the two drive. Um, uh, the A D A. Requires four eighty spaces for this site, they are providing two. Um, back in, so you there there used to be different sort of guidance and rules about what happens with A D A spaces for valet parking. But in two thousand and ten, that was changed to require that if you have an A D A space, A D A spaces are required in valet lots. And they've got to be self parked with conforming drive aisles and that's because. Certain certain handicap folks, their vehicles are specialized vehicles that really require them to. Self park and not to be valet parked. And so you've got to have, you've got to design a valet garage. To accommodate self parking for your A D A vehicles and that includes the the drive aisles. Um, that's in our in our report and in their plans, um, which are. Traffic engineer did a bit of a mockup of, this is a little hard to read, but because they've got. Maybe that's big enough. But where their valet, where their their two A D A spaces are, they've got. Valet parking, they've got their their parking spaces to get to their eighty three, which is well below the hundred required, but to get to their eighty three. This is parking, this is all parking. They don't have a drive aisle that meets anything close to what your regulations are for self park. Now, if this is not an A D A space and it's all valet. And and you're going to say they don't have to comply with drive aisles, that's fine for the non A D A spaces. But for those that are A D A's A D A, there's got to be access to those spaces and out pursuant to your regulations. For a drive aisle widths and parking space uh dimensions, which they don't need. Um. Valet parking, it's not allowed as a right. They need to provide you with an operating plan that demonstrates that it's going to work. Um, they have in this case provided you a plan, but it doesn't come close to showing that it's going to work. Um, the 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 big issue is that, you know, they they're proposing two elevators here. Um, rather than ramps, which means that when cars come in and park. Um, and get dropped off, you've got to have a valet. Move that up or down and do the same thing with retrieving cars. And that takes time. So the Saturday on their their numbers for our hotel use. Saturday peak hours, forty two cars in and thirty two cars out. Seventy four cars in an hour with two bays to go up and down. They need to show with the queuing study. How those cars can actually be accommodated, what the timing is going to be, not like in the manual, but with the valets, how that will work, which. McLaren's done many times for valet operations, I I'm sure that applicants, traffic engineers are capable of doing it. It hasn't been done, so you don't have enough to know that this system uh will work. Um, it might work, but you don't know that, um, the the T M P memo. Says essentially exactly the same thing, that they ought to provide a queuing study to show. How this is going to work and that it actually will work. Uh, that hasn't happened yet. The parking, they are asking for a waiver of parking, again, there's they're saying eighty three spaces and that they are entitled to a waiver, but they have to, they have to show that they're that they're they get a waiver. You have extended stay hotels, one space per living unit, so that's a hundred spaces for a hundred rooms. Valet, again, it can be done through valet parking, subject to approval of an operating plan by the commission. I'd submit that you don't have an operating plan that you can approve at this time. The waiver itself then says. The operator shall purchase parking passes from Nora Parking Authority to adjust for any shortfall in the total number of required spaces. And pay the city for two calendar years and it goes on from there, right? They haven't actually sought from T M P a waiver, there's been nothing, I haven't seen anything in the record that indicates that. There's also nothing in the record from T M P that it has those those spaces available to provide a wa- a waiver. As you know, the Webster Street lot is slated slated for redevelopment. So it's not clear to me that T M P has seventeen spaces that it can offer this developer. For the two year period after the building's constructed. Um, to establish that their valet system works and this differs from past practice, so this. This was. When the residence in was created. With their app, when the application was filed, uh, Dory Wilson, um, from used to be in the zoning office. Um, to T M P, wh- which was the parking authority at that time to confirm, had them confirm. Or had. T M P rather confirmed to zoning that in fact, there's a request for the purchase of the parking spaces and. That the parking authority in fact does have the authority and will sell those spaces to the uh applicant. Uh, we don't have that here. I I mean, I question whether they that they intend to actually do construct this um system with elevators or whether their their real plan is to. Uh, get the approval and come back without elevators with less parking. And that is what they did, this this, the residence in was actually a two thousand and nine application. That called for a two elevator bays. Only no, no garage that you could self park and no ramps, they they called for the elevators to go in on that hundred unit building. That was the original plan in two thousand and nine, but. That didn't, that never came to fruition, uh, they came back in two thousand and thirteen, I believe, or fourteen. Uh, with a modified application, uh, I suspect because the elevator, the cost for installing the elevators and operating them was going to be prohibitive. So they came back and said, we want to, we want to change the regs. To allow for parking waivers for extended stay hotels, to allow for that, to allow for us to have. Less parking spaces in that residence in and we'll dump the elevators and we'll put ramps in. And that's what was approved and then constructed. Um, and and this is not, wouldn't be the only time that you've had that happen, the last elevator project, I I think the last elevator project was Poco. Um, uh, that proposed elevators to serve uh that building and we know that didn't materialize. In fact, that was one of the downfalls of that uh building. Uh, in your peer review report. I'll just jump through, I know, I know Mister Fish spoke and I I don't want to bore you to death here, um, but he does note that that. The properties are in the National uh Register, uh Historic District. Uh, it's a cohesive contiguous rows of historic commercial structures. The proposed design has little cohesion with the surrounding context and historic district, the facade enassing appears out of context with the existing scale of the neighborhood. And adjacent two and three story buildings efforts should be made to create a more contextually cohesive design. Materials proposed are not compatible with the district and surrounding building materials. The cornices do not relate to the historic precedent, uh. Goes on, um, and then he has a this a large discussion which uh about. Changing the entrance to this building and making it a a one drive in and out rather than the the. A two way drive rather than a one way that that loops. Um. But that there may be an opportunity to maintain elements of the existing twenty five Main Street facade. Uh. And. Uh. Sidewalk loading, that there's a loading issue and circulation for their site, which which I've noted for you and he noted as well. And then I'll move on from his report on your special permit criteria. Um, so right, this is in the, this, this is in the old. They've applied, uh, asking for approval under the old regulations, that's the Washington Street Design District. Um, and their related parking regs, um, and it doesn't comply with that, and I think I've cut through some of that with you now, and I I think for those reasons it should be denied. Um, but but even if you moved on, then for the special permit criteria. The. The first criteria is that it's got to be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the regulations. And it has to comply with some specific special permit criteria. I want to go through just a few of those with you. The general purpose, right, the Washington Street Design District, purpose and intent. Preserve and enhance the unique character of Washington Street Historic District. Encouraging the preservation of existing buildings by ensuring all uses and structures will be compatible with one another with the established character of the area. And I'd submit that what they've proposed doesn't meet that general criteria. Specifically, the stable traffic flow. Um. It fails to maintain stable traffic flow because it's going to adversely affect pedestrian and vehicle safety. As set forth by our traffic engineer in his report. Be and because of that lack of loading and queuing space, uh, it's going to cause congestion on South Main and Washington uh during uh peak hours. The uh, it has to comply with the zoning code and plan of conservation and development, I had note in the the. The P O C D uses the word historic four hundred and ninety one times, I mean, that's like. Unbelievable to me, it shocked me that that it's used that many times in the P O C D. The very first page of the like actual contents of it lists the five key summary themes of all the, you know, the hundreds of pages in that report, there's five key themes. And one of the five is to continue and protect Norwalk's cultural resource, cultural and historic assets. Uh, it talks at length about the Sono and the details, a key asset to Sono is its historic character. And even in the beginning of the P O C D and the executive summary. That, you know, this Norwalk's historic and environmental assets are key competitive resources. And Norwalkers will benefit from more systematic protection of historic resources throughout the city. And you know, one thing, because I know you guys don't usually think about it, but. Um, you know, what what why do we sort of care about these local historic districts? And in the P O C D, kind of gives it, I thought, a nice explanation. They guarantee the historic character of an area is preserved, which very often results in increased market value. Numerous studies have shown that designation as a local historic district typically increases market value and stabilizes value during real estate downturns. Historic preservation has also proven to be economic beneficial on a community wide basis. So the gist is right, people, people. Like and are drawn to historic districts and historic neighborhoods and there's value in preserving those. Um. So, um, and I'm going to talk in a minute, we're going to talk a little more about historic preservation, um, the. Uh, and which I'm kind of moving on to now, we we filed a notice of intervention, I. Maybe you've seen those before, maybe not, um, and so, um, I just wanted to. Uh, let you understand what that what that is, um, you're obviously free to seek opinion from the law department if if you like. But um, but intervention, it's a Connecticut State um statute that allows for it, it allows you to intervene. Um, for historic preservation, um, to show that the buildings that are at issue are either listed or under consideration for listing as individual units on the National Register. Or part of a historic, part of a district listed under consideration. Uh, determined by the state Historic Preservation Board to contribute to the historic significance of the district. We've given you some materials that substantiate that first component of intervention. Then it's on, it's on us, it's on the intervenor. To demonstrate to you that the conduct that's being proposed is likely to unreasonably destroy the public trust in those historic structures or landmarks. And that's, and there's case law on it, but that's sort of accomplished essentially by showing that it's going to be demolished or destroyed. Which there's no dispute that they plan to demolish or destroy the two buildings. Now, that doesn't end the 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 case, once those elements are established, then the burden shifts. To the applicant and uh the applicant has to then. Prove to you that under all relevant surrounding circumstances and factors, there's no feasible feasible and prudent alternative. To their development plan and that their conduct is consistent with the reasonable requirements of public health, safety and welfare. I think there's some case law on this, that prudent alternatives are those which are economically reasonable in light of the social benefits derived from the activity. Costs may be considered in deciding what is prudent, a mere showing of expense will not mean that an alternative is imprudent. Um, and so that's the sort of test that you have, there's there's, um. I don't think there's, there's been, uh, uh, these these structures you'll hear, uh, particularly the the twenty five uh South Main one has operated. Uh, with, uh, I think offices on the first floor, maybe had apartments upstairs, it was the 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 ground level was. Uh, occupied within the past year, um, so that there are economically viable uses for these structures. Um, there they particularly the twenty five South Main is not in dire uh need of uh demolition. Uh, it's not, it's not going to be uh reasonably expensive to put it back into commerce without uh demolishing it. Um, and um. And so, and before I turn it over to the the three historic um folks, um. I'll stop my share and just um, uh, briefly, uh, talk a little bit more on on this historic preservation. Uh, part and and I will note, there is a letter in the record from Preservation Connecticut, uh, opposing the demolition of the structures. Um, and so you're the, and and I know you're going to hear from Wes and David and Todd about why would the unreasonable destroy the. Uh, historic structures and really most notably the twenty five South Main. Um, the um, the the Washington South Main Historic District is awesome, it's a, really, it's a, it's a amazing asset. For Norwalk, it really is. Um, and listen, in general, I'm not a big preservationist, I'm not the one that's. Uh, you know, that's saying every building in Norwalk has got to be preserved. Um, and often you look at an old junky looky building, I'm, it's not particularly viable and I'm going to say knock it down. Um, but that's not really what's happening here, um. This this district, it's a large collection of historic buildings. And it's such an enormous asset because it is a district, it's cohesive. Um, this, this. Application, if it's granted, if both of these buildings come down, then we lose. The end, in my view, that's sort of the end of the district, and the reason I say that. I is that it's it's a signal that that it is the end of the district, because. If you can take the twenty five South Main building, which looks like every other building in my view on Washington Street. And say, well, let's knock it down because. A hotel wants to go in here. Then what happens when the the next property owner on Washington Street says, you know what? We we don't like having our restaurant on the first floor and a couple of apartments on the second floor, we want to build a bigger building there, we want to do. Uh, uh, something much larger, we'll tear these down because. We the the windows have been changed and the 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 stucco is a little different than it was originally. Uh, I I think that's a loss for uh all of us, um, and I think. In general, when applications have come before you, um, typically. There's been, and, and they come under different circumstances and different regs, I, I get that. But typically they come before you and they say, hey, listen. We'll preserve the, the nice building on the block. And we're going to actually rehab it and make it wonderful and great as long as you let us demo the junkier stuff on the block. And that's not, you know, official like language there, but that's, that's the, the gist of what you hear actually fairly often. And that's a kind of a quid pro quo. They agree to, to, to save the best of what's there. You allow them to, to go forward with some form of a development plan and it, it, it functionally works. But this is not that. This is, let's take down to the ground everything that's here and put something new up. And there's no reason to have a historic district if, if, if that's okay. And if that's the test that you want to apply. The. The, and, and. That, that was really what was, it, it wasn't directly, but originally essentially proposed, right? The, the last plan didn't have anything happening with 25 South Main. The plan called for 3135 South Main, one half of this project to be demolished. In order to put an addition on the residents in. But 25 South Main wouldn't have been touched under that plan. And that's not the same plan. So this is not like a repeat of the, the old plan that you heard a few years back. So I, I think that you'll, you'll, when you hear from the rest of our, our team and I, I prom- I made them be shorter than me. They promised me, so hopefully that will happen. But I think when you hear from them, that I, 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 I hope that you will find that on the intervention. That, that it is in fact unreasonably likely to destroy the public trust in those structures. And there is an alternative and, and make them maintain at least the 25 South Main. Which, which would require a denial of the application on that grounds. Along with the grounds that it doesn't comply with your, your regs and it doesn't comply with your special permit requirements. Okay, with that, I will, I will shut up and I would ask.
Uh, we're not, sorry, Attorney Blank. We've been at this now for three hours and with apologies to all those people waiting to speak. We are first going to take a 10 minute break. And it is. Eight fifty seven. We'll come back at nine, 10 and. Continue and go on through until we're finished. But traditionally at nine PM, we, we take this brief relief break. So we'll reconvene, as I said, at nine, 10 with again. Apologies to all of you who are waiting. But. As I said, we've been at it for three hours. So we'll be back at nine, 10. Okay, it's nine, 10. We're back in session. Adam, you had a couple of other people on your team you want to introduce the next.
Yes. Yeah, I want, I mean, if there's questions for me, I'll take them, otherwise we'll, we'll pass it over to Wes Haynes. I think was who I'd like to speak first, the historic.
Typically, we, this is not an interaction. We'll listen to what you have to say. But we won't, we won't be asking questions.
Okay. Wes?
Okay. Thank you Chairman Schulman. My name is Wes Haynes. I'm a resident of Stanford. I'm a Stanford based historic preservation professional. With a 45 year career experience in preservation. I've worked in architectural firms, I've worked in non. I've worked on exterior restoration back in the eighties. In the field of doing the work with the contractor. I did the master plan for the New York State Capitol in Albany, leading to its 30 year restoration program. I've, my nonprofit experience has been with the Landmarks Conservancy in New York City. There I was the project director of a facade study. That, that was done in response to New York's periodic inspection law. And also a window replacement study that we did because the J 51, which was a, a, a local legislation that encouraged replacement windows. So I've. I'm a graduate and I have a master's in science from Columbia University. In historic preservation undergraduate degree in history. I have taught and set up the program, a historic preservation program at Rensselaer Polytech in Troy. Also Brooklyn High School, the arts, I set up a high school curriculum for historic preservation. And I also taught at Parsons for a while. I was currently a part time executive director of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy. Recently, I was the executive director of the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation. I also worked for the New Jersey Historic Trust and the Preservation League of New York State. So I, Attorney Blank just asked me to give my credentials to you all because you may not have seen them. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about tonight about the National Register process. How, what the district is and what these two buildings mean to the district. And then also comment on Mr. Devensher's report. So first off, the National Register process, I know Mr. Rich said something about two buildings before that are in the district, but they're not historic. Let me clarify exactly what the National Register district is. The National Register was created by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. To establish federal policy to protect buildings and places that are valuable to American culture. To understand local history. And it's a very rigorous process to put a, a building or a district on the National Register. It goes through multi level review at the state level. It goes through federal review by architectural historians, historians, landscape architects. It, it's a multi tiered process. And during that process of a district designation. Each building in the district is determined to be either contributing to the district or non contributing. Both of the buildings that we're talking about tonight are contributing elements in the district. When they, when the, this district was created. When they, when the, this district was created in nineteen eighty five as an extension to the original nineteen seventy five district. So let me tell you a little bit about, uh, what I found, um, doing some research. The national register. Um, lists properties for, uh, different reasons. Uh, a, a property or a district needs to meet, um, at least one criteria for significance. Uh, this district meets two. Uh, the first criteria it meets is for historical significance. Um, it's, and that is based in the people that, uh, that built and occupied the buildings that are in the district. Um, and, uh, what they mean to Norwalk. In this case, um, there's a lot of buildings in the district that were built by, uh, first generation immigrants to the United States. A very important part of Norwalk's, South Norwalk's story is who built these buildings. The second is architectural, that, um, the building has to contribute to a sense of place. And this sense of place is, as Attorney Blank was talking about before, is, is determined by the sense of scale and the harmony with other buildings in the district. They don't, they're not all matchy matchy. They don't have to all look alike, uh, but they have to together tell a story. And the story that these two buildings tell is pretty compelling. So, um, when the district, the first dis- buildings in the district were, uh, were built, they were built right after, um, the construction of an eighteen seventy railroad depot, uh, which was right behind twenty five and thirty one thirty five. Uh, that it was the abutting property, the tracks run behind it and still do today. Uh, the tracks were on grade at that time. Uh, by the eighteen nineties, uh, the tracks, um, the, the tracks on grade at the intersection of Washington were a real safety hazard. So the railroad proposed to build the trestle, um, to get the tracks up, up off the street grid. And to build, um, and to raise them up from grade up to the trestle. Uh, they put in the earthen embankment that still is there in place. It's all covered with riprap. It's not a very sightly feature today. And it wasn't a sightly feature then, and it really kind of the, the blowback from that, uh, that embankment started a new, uh, concern of aesthetics in South Norwalk. Um, and we were right in the middle of a period of American architectural history that we now call and was called then to the, uh, city beautiful movement. Um, it's, uh, it sort of begins with Central Park in New York where there's a, a beautiful environment created. And the Merritt Parkway is actually considered the last gasp of the city beautiful movement from the nineteen thirties. Uh, when there was a real sense of design, and I think all you have to do is compare the Merritt Parkway to I ninety five, and you can see the difference between, uh, a transportation feature that's beautiful and one that is, well, less than beautiful. So, um, the, uh, the, these two buildings were built, were the first two expressions of the city beautiful movement in the historic district, especially twenty five. Um, the national register, uh, date is incorrect. Uh, it says that it was built in nineteen hundred. It was actually built in nineteen twelve. And that's the same year that the Carnegie Library was built on Washington. And City Hall was built as well that year. Um, they were two major monuments of the city beautiful movement, neoclassicism. Um, they were a revival of forms that were present in the historic district before then. And they're outside the district, but the, the historic district hadn't done classical buildings before. And, uh, twenty five was the first neoclassical building to be built in the district. It was built by William, uh, Henry McMahon, uh, who was a local builder. He was second generation Irish. Um, his father had been, had immigrated here and his mother, um, during the potato famine. Um, and they, uh, got work on an estate in, in Norwalk. Uh, they raised a whole bunch of kids, including William Henry. Who, um, who did better than their parents did. Uh, William became, uh, started work and all the, all the McMahon kids started work in the shoe industry, in the hat industry in, uh, South Norwalk. Um, and when certain strikes went, they, they went in and out of the industry. And finally, William, uh, went into business for himself. He apprenticed as a carpenter and became a builder. And over the, the course of his life, he built, um, over five hundred residences in South Norwalk. Um, William Henry McMahon was also the father of Brian McMahon. Who many of you may know, uh, as, because many of you probably went to Brian McMahon High School. Um, uh, Br- James Bri- James O'Brien McMahon, he, he voluntarily changed his name to Brian with an E. Um, uh, became a US Senator, uh, and Chairman of the Atomic Energy Commission as the time that the bomb was dropped. So this is a, a great story of, um, uh, in terms of the history of this building, of who built it. Of a family that made it. Um, and as a, as a sort of a third generation Irish American myself. Um, I feel really proud. This, this building kind of, you know, relates to me. It, it hits a vibe with me. So much is, is about telling stories, uh, today. To the built environment. Um, number thirty one thirty five is a, a slightly different story. Um, this was, uh, built by, um, a Russian Jewish immigrant. Who came in, uh, he was born in Russia. Um, he immigrated to New York, um. Lived for a few years in Patterson, New Jersey, and by nineteen oh four, he came to South Norwalk. And there was a building on the site before that, a three unit tenement building. Um, that he, um, converted this, the center unit of it to his Paris, um, uh, clothing store. He, he was a tailor. Um, there was a bakery next to it. Um, there was a, uh, another, uh, shoe store next to it on the other side. And, um, uh, he, in nineteen thirteen, a year after McMahon built the McMahon block. Um, he decided to, um, uh, buy the building and, um, and, and operated it there until nineteen twenty seven, when the US Post Office issued a, what would we now call an RFP? Uh, for, uh, to, to build a building in South Norwalk to house the post office that wasn't owned by the federal government. So the federal government was going to lease this building. Um, nineteen, a, a year before that, um, a new standard had come in for post offices. Um, so, uh, basically, we don't know the architect of, of thirty one thirty five. But, um, it was, uh, built to federal specifications. They met with, uh, the post office in, um, Boston, uh, Udelman and his architect, who was unnamed in the press. Um, and, um, it is probably one of the best built buildings in South Norwalk. I mean, federal buildings didn't fool around. They had very tight specs. Um, and that's why there is so much steel in that building and why, um, why Mr. Devonshire noted that there's some steel jacking on the facade. Um, so, uh, so it was, uh, built as that and operated for ten years before the post office moved to, to Washington. Uh, Udelman was not just, um, uh, he had some other dimensions to his character. We don't know a whole lot about him. Uh, but he was credited in the press with helping to bring the Leroy Shirt Company to South Norwalk. Um, he, he was in the textile industry and the garment business. Um, his sisters and brothers were all working in the garment in, in the shirt making business. Um, and he sort of, uh, made the connections, uh, for Leroy to come, and they became a very large employer in South Norwalk. Um, also, um, he was the first person to start raising money for the new, uh, state, what, what was called then the new Jewish state in Palestine. Uh, he did numerous fundraisers out of, um, his shop, um, in that building at thirty one thirty five. So, uh, from, just from the origin story of these buildings, they're pretty significant. Um, they were, they were virtually entirely occupied, um, up until very recently. Um, it, Udelman's, after the post office left, uh, a grocery store moved into the larger space in the Udelman block. Um, and, um, uh, and, and some, uh, some other, uh, grocers were, were located in the McMahon block. Uh, McMahon block at some point became, uh, the Macedonia Church. Uh, until they, uh, they have recently bought their own, uh, building, uh, a former Methodist church in, in South Norwalk. So, uh, the Udelman Building is a second phase of, of, uh, the neoclassical revival. Um, it was, uh, be, it was being pushed by the federal government. It was called stripped or starved classic. Uh, Louis A. Simon, the architect, the supervising architect of the treasury is considered one of the major proponents of this style. And although Simon did not sign off on this building, uh, everybody who worked under Simon, uh, would have, would have understood that this was the way the direction was going. And if you look at the facade and compare it to some of the bridges on the Merritt Parkway, which are also starved or stripped classic, um, there's a real relationship there. Um, it's actually quite a beautiful building, um, when you look at the nineteen eighty five photographs of it. Um, before it's, it's current condition today. So that's a little bit on the history. Now I'd like to comment on, on Mr. Devonshire's report. Uh, which, um, is a very strange report. Uh, because it doesn't do a very deep dive into the history. It isn't curious about the history at all. Um, it seems to use, it's its only source, the national register nomination and repeats the, the incorrect date for the O'Brien, uh, the, the, um, McMahon block. And, um, and so it, I don't think he was very curious about the history. He never mentions the use of the building as a post office. I, um, I, I agree with him on some points that there's some distress in the facade, but I don't buy his, um, really kind of, uh, very extreme, uh, statement that there's a lot of distress in the fa- the facade that is somehow covered by paint. Um, I've worked with a lot of steel jacking replacement in my career. Um, a lot of buildings in New York City, um, that are in historic districts have that same detail in them. Uh, Sunnyside Gardens, um, has, uh, repeated numbers of lentils like that, that I don't know how many I've repaired. Uh, or ri- written the specs for repair that have been successfully repaired. Um, it is not a critically, uh, did, uh, uh, a death sentence for a building. Um, I, I taught with Donald Friedman and I, I, uh, as a structural engineer that Mr. Devonshire, uh, referenced. Um, I have great respect for him, but I'd rather see his, his report than Mr. Devonshire's paraphrasing of what they, they saw together. Um, it certainly wasn't a very, um, uh, close investigation. Mr. Devonshire noted that he didn't do any probes. I don't know how he can determine that there's no, of, none of the original stucco left on twenty five. Um, he'd have to have X-ray vision to, to determine that without doing probes. Uh, just because there's some telegraphing of some, um, anchorage, doesn't mean that there's no stucco, uh, left. I agree that there's probably some damage to the original stucco, but there's probably enough there to recreate it. Now, Mr. Devonshire seems to equate, um, disnification. He used the word four times in his presentation tonight. Disnification to, um, preservationists is when you take a facade and you put some sort of substitute material on it. Like they do at Disneyland fiberglass. But restoration, re- replenishing original finishes is a normal part of any rehabilitation work. And I'm sure that, uh, that Mr. Goslin will talk a little bit about that when he's, he's up at bat. So, um, uh, also, Mr. Devonshire doesn't take into account that, that, that both buildings have their original window openings. Um, he talked a lot about the, the fact that the, the stucco was, was over them and it's, it's a pastiche. Um, on twenty five. But the masonry openings on, on, uh, the window sash, w- we, we acknowledge has been changed. It's not, uh, a, 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 it's not a feature that would delist or take away the historical architectural significance of a building to have replacement windows in it. Uh, the National Historic Preservation Act was created with the national register as more of an incentive to get developers to, um, to do good things to their buildings rather than that. Um, the, the previous owners clearly didn't take advantage of those programs. Um, but those programs are there now and there's a lot of money that Mr. Bryant will talk about later on, uh, in our presentation. So, um, in closing, I, I, I would, um, advise you not to take Mr. Devonshire's, um. Report. It, to call it a report is, is being generous. Um, it's really a kind of an impression, um, something that you might write, uh, on the basis, some notes you might write on a base of a, of a field visit. There's no, um, it's, it incorrectly, um, describes the conditions on thirty one thirty five. Um, I believe that there's more there. Um, there's more to the original, uh, storefront on thirty one thirty five. Um, that's covered up by a very cheap looking, uh, uh, storefront right now. Uh, the photographs from nineteen eighty five show it was a limestone, uh, lintel. Um, no, no one who would put in a, a crappy repair like that. Um, would, uh, go to the expense of taking out a limestone lintel to replace it. So I'm sure that there's more, uh, there than, than meets the eye. Um, and, uh, uh, and, and I think that I want to leave you with this question. These are two buildings with really great stories. They really contribute to the story of the district. They contribute to the story of South Norwalk. And in terms of the McMahon block, probably the story of, of, uh, of the United States. And, um, and the story of Israel, which it really isn't a consideration of South Norwalk for thirty one thirty five. Um, removing these buildings should not be done lightly. Um, I think that there should be a concerted discussion about, uh, ways to preserve them somehow in any new development that's proposed for the site. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. Um, uh, David?
Thanks, Adam. Um, my name is David Goslin. I'm a principal with Crosskey Architects. Uh, Crosskey Architects is a Hartford based architectural firm that specializes in multifamily historic preservation and adaptive reuse. We've got forty years of experience working throughout the state, and I've been with the firm for thirty four years. On a typical year, we work on approximately eight to ten preservation projects involving, um, adaptive reuse and historic preservation. These projects typically utilize both state and federal tax credit money to help finance the, the renovation costs. Uh, some of the projects, uh, that we have worked on, uh, for preservation consist of the, uh, the state Capitol in Hartford. Uh, we've recently completed, uh, some preservation work with the ley lights there. We've also some, done some exterior renovations, uh, preservation to the, uh, Mark Twain House, the brickwork and the exterior wood detailing of, of that. And we're currently working on the neighbor to the Mark Twain House, uh, renovations to the Stowe, Eric Reacher Stowe Center. Um, on that property as well. Some of our adaptive reuse projects, uh, are, which we are, are more known for is we, we take a lot of old school buildings that are vacant and convert it to multifamily apartments and, and do the same thing for some old mill buildings. Um, that's, that's our bread and butter kind of for our historic work. Back in, in twenty, uh, fourteen, we had a five year contract with, uh, Connecticut Main Streets, which was a nonprofit organization, in which they had a project that they entitled Come Home to Downtown. And the whole, uh, idea behind this concept was to take a deeper look at these buildings that we have in our downtown areas that are underutilized. They have, uh, occupied first floors, but the upper floors are vacant. Um, and we did extensive studies in, uh, Torrington, Waterbury, Meriden, Norwich, New Britain, Danbury, Hartford. And, and which we did code evaluate evaluations and we, we did, um, adaptive reuse studies for how these buildings could be put best back into service. Uh, one of the highlights of, of this project was in Waterbury on, uh, twenty East Main Street, which was a, a large block, uh, building that occupied the entire block. First floor had active retail, but the upper two floors were vacant offices. We actually converted the upper two floors to, uh, dormitories for the University of Connecticut Waterbury Campus. It's been up and running for five years now and it's been very successful. And in, in turn, that has kind of created some o- occupancy into the empty retail spaces that were on the, on the first floor. So there is an economic benefit to, uh, preservation and, and taking old buildings and putting them back into service. So w- with that, that was kind of a good segue into my task on, on this particular project. And that was to speak on the, um, adaptive reuse possibilities for these two buildings. Uh, and, and very much these two buildings aligned with, with a lot of the buildings that we looked at as, as, as part of that project. Um, for twenty five South Main Street. It's an existing three story building. Uh, it's got two vacant storefronts on the first floor. And the upper floor has, uh, two levels, which is believed to have been designed for apartments. Uh, but I believe last I heard it was used as office space. Uh, we didn't, we weren't given access into the building, so I can't really speak on, onto the layout of the upper floors. But, um, knowing what I, I, I do know about the shape and the size of the building, the upper floors would lend themselves, uh, given the, the current downturn in the office market. There is really no use for office space i- in these, in either of these buildings. Um, I, I see the upper floors in both of these buildings being converted to, uh, rental apartments. I, I think the upper two floors at twenty five Main Street could be converted into, um. Yeah, four to eight units, uh, of apartments, depending on the size. You can have studios, one bedrooms or two bedrooms. And then, uh, the first floor retail space of twenty five. Obviously with the vitality that's currently in the downtown district. This would lend itself to being re- reused and repurposed for, uh, further, uh. this would lend itself to being reused and repurposed for further retail and commercial spaces. You know, such uses as restaurants, bakery, coffee shop, or specialty retail stores. Likewise, thirty-one to thirty-five South Main Street, same, same issue. The large retail spaces on the first floor can be repurposed as well as the upper floor of the, of that building. The upper floor of that building does not go the full depth. The, the ground floor goes from the street and it extends all the way back to the railroad tracks. The second floor extends back and is about sixty feet in depth. It pretty much lines up with the back facade of twenty-five. So that sixty-foot depth is ideal for a residential apartment, which has a single corridor down the center with units on both sides. I, obviously, ideally fifty-five to sixty feet is the, the desired width for that type of, of building. And this certainly meets that requirement. In that building, depending again on, on the, the unit mix, whether you have studios, one bedrooms or two bedrooms, I think you can get anywhere between six to twelve apartments on that second floor. Both buildings have contributing, contribute to the character of the Washington Street and South Main Street historic districts. Their scale and their unique designs capture the essence of the nineteenth and early twentieth century architecture that defined that district. Both buildings appear to be in good solid structural condition. I, I was in thirty-one to thirty-five last year and with a structural engineer. And, and that building is pretty solid. It had some routed floor joists along the back where, where it butts the masonry wall along the train station, along the train tracks. But in general, the building was pretty solid. I can't speak so much for thirty, twenty-five, thirty-five South Main Street. But I, I will say, through my years of, of, of doing this type of work, we have restored buildings that are in far, far worse condition than these two buildings are. These buildings are, are pretty much out of, on a scale eight to ten, I would say they are probably an, an eight. And we've done extensive renovations to buildings that were, we couldn't even go in because they weren't even safe to go in. So there is money available. The, the buildings, because they are listed and contributing within the historic district, they are eligible for state and historic tax credits, which can be sizable. And oftentimes, they can provide up to as much as forty percent of the hard costs for, for such renovations. So the whole purpose of that tax credit program is to help make these buildings and take these buildings that need some attention and some money to, to make it possible, to, to provide the funding to make it possible for renovations. So in, in conclusion, I, I think these buildings are good candidates and should be saved, and, and they do have potential for being repurposed and, and, and being brought back into service. So with that, I will turn it back over to Adam.
Thanks, David. Todd, do you want to give us five minutes on the preservation incentives?
Absolutely. Thank you, Adam, and thank you, Chairman Shulman and members of the commission for allowing us to speak tonight. Many of you know me as the president of the Nor reservation Trust. And I've actually taken a, an official leave of absence from them in order to be able to do this work. I actually, my preservation work extends beyond Norwalk. I, I, I earned a Master's of Arts in Historic Preservation from Gauter College in two thousand eight. I am, I meet the National Park Service requirements as defined in, in the Code of Federal, Federal Regulations as thirty-six CFR sixty-one Appendix A as a, an architectural historian, historian, and a historic preservation consultant. And in doing that work, since twenty-two thousand eight, I have written nominations for seventeen National Register buildings and districts, six of which are in Norwalk, seven state register, state register of historic places, buildings or districts, three of which are in Norwalk, and thirteen historic rehabilitation tax credit projects, two of which are in Norwalk. And as a result of that work, I was named the two thousand twenty-two distinguished alumnus of Gauter College. And I have six preservation preservation merit awards from the Preservation Connecticut, formerly known as Historic Connecticut Preservation Trust. So that's my background, a, a little bit more than, than you might have known. And, and there's more, and it's all in the CD that, that you, that you've received. So what I'm here to talk about is, since, since Wes and Dave had talked about the history and the, the the structural soundness of the buildings, I'm here to talk about how to pay for it. And there are four preservation, financial preservation incentives that are available for these buildings, two of which are local Norwalk incentives and their direct grants. One of them is from the Norwalk Department of Community and Economic Development. It's a storefront improvement grant. And it, it, it's only available to buildings listed in the National Register, which these are. They are available for the restoration of, restoration, rehabilitation of existing commercial storefronts. They are, they will fund up to eighty percent of the cost of rehabilitation to a maximum of sixteen thousand dollars. The next one is from the Norwalk Redevelopment Agency. This is the Historic Facade Improvement Grant Program. This is a matching grant program. It is similar i- to the, the Community Economic Development Program, except that it doesn't require that it be a commercial building. And these grants, they are matching grants up to a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars for the, for the work on historic facade. They're matching grants, but you can actually use the grant from Economic Development as part of your match, part or all of your match for this grant from the Redevelopment Agency. So this is a substantial amount of money coming directly from the city of Norwalk based on all of the things on the, that Adam talked about in the P O C D. Now, the other ones that are a little bit more widespread are the state, state of Connecticut Historic Rehabilitation Tax Credits. Now, these are good for twenty-five percent of the hard costs of rehabilitation. You have to follow the Secretary of the Interior standards, and it must be a substantial rehabilitation. In other words, you have to do the whole building inside now. But that is, that's a lot of money. And it can be combined with the other two grants. So the next one is that, and all this is available for these, for these buildings. And as I, as I, as I say, I've done thirteen of these historic rehabilitation tax credit projects. Is the federal historic rehabilitation tax credit. That is good for twenty percent of the hard and soft costs of rehabilitation. It is also requires a substantial rehabilitation in, you know, the entire building, interior and exterior. You also have to follow the Secretary of the Interior standards. None of this is impossible. It's, it's done all the time. It's, it, it generally, you know, in generally yields a better project than if these standards were not followed. And so that's twenty percent of the hard and soft costs. So you can, so that's a nominal forty-five percent of your equity in the, in the rehabilitation of these buildings. And then you can add to that the local grants from Economic Development and redevelopment. So there is a substantial amount of money out there for the rehabilitation of these buildings. There, you know, Mr. Devonshire's report notwithstanding, and I certainly stand by everything that Wes Haines said about it. Sorry, getting over this nasty cold. Don't get it. Don't get it. In what, if, if, for the things that are required to bring these buildings up to the best that they can possibly be, there is a lot of money available, and it's available because of the significance of these buildings, because of their historical significance, because of their stories, and because of their architecture. So thank you very much, and I, you know, I, well, I guess there will be no questions. So thanks again.
So I think, so that's all that we have for presenters. I'll just, I'll just point out, because I obviously don't know what the rest of the public hearing is going to go, and I don't anticipate that the chair is going to want to allow me to do a rebuttal after the applicant. So, so knowing that, I'll just, I'll just say that to the extent that there are significant changes proposed to the development application that we've seen, I don't believe those can be put on as a condition. I think that we've got to be able to see and review any revised plans. And the public, the public as well has got to have an opportunity to comment on that. If you accept it as, as proposed, you know, we'll decide whether we'll appeal or not, but that'll be it. And if you deny it, that's, that's certainly fine with us as well. But if there are conditions on a design that we have not yet seen, we, we do, we do think that you've, you've got to allow public to comment on any new design before it can be potentially approved by your body. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, Attorney Blank and his group are here in, in the capacity of making public comments. And they are limited to that and not giving direction as to how this commission is to consider its decision and any conditions that it may impose upon any application. They've made their presentation, and now it's up to the commission to continue its public hearing as it does with every other application before it, and giving every other public hearing commenter the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Attorney Sachi. Steve, do you want to let people in to speak?
Yeah, Michelle is the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll let Michelle season, well, that way we'll ensure things go more smoothly.
Okay.
Sure. So if you'd like to participate in this public hearing on this item, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen if you're dialing on the phone.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, did you, I apologize, Michelle, for cutting you off. I know we do have Jim Travers on it, and I probably should have gotten to him early. Did you want to get any additional comments to him outside of what Mr. Fish had mentioned?
Yeah, I would be happy to allow Jim to speak now if he wishes. I apologize, I didn't know that he was going to speak here this evening. I thought he was here for other business, but that's perfectly all right.
Mr. Shulman, may I just interject one other thing? Would you prefer to have comments by our team in response to any of the comments raised, presented in rebuttal collectively, rather than now in, in the public portion?
It's inappropriate, it's inappropriate to have them in the public portion, so.
We will wait for rebuttal. Thank you.
Jim, please, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah, I think I have a couple of items on, on your agenda tonight. So I'll be with you, I think, for the duration. You know, I just, I think you, you, you have the report from T M P. I think there's some traffic issues that we, that we asked for clarification. I think there's some operational issues that have been identified earlier that we've asked for clarification. You know, I think you, one of the larger issues that we did address and that we were not able to get to consensus with our discussions with the developer was the dual driveways, right? I think you, you heard me talk about it before. My, my narrative is pretty.